And welcome to the October 15th meeting of the zoning board of appeals here at Zoom Town Hall, as Ken likes to say, in accordance with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Tonight's meeting of the zoning board of appeals is physically closed to the public in order to avoid group congregation. There are alternative public access measures in place. The meeting is being televised as usual via Falmouth Community Television, and real time public comment can be addressed to the zoning board of appeals utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application allows users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the chair via the chat function. Submitted texts will be read into the record at the appropriate point during the meeting. And for Zoom login instructions, the instructions and the meeting link for this meeting can be viewed at www.falmouthmass.us/zba. From there, there is a link that starts up the Zoom app, and eventually I'll provide further instruction later on, but you can provide your name, address, and whatever concern you might have into the chat function, and we will get to it at the appropriate time during the meeting. Introducing the board at this time. My name is TJ Hury. I am the chair of the board. Ken Foreman is our vice chair. Bob Dugan is the board's clerk. Ed Van Kuren is a full voting member. Scott Zalinski is a full voting member as well. Mary Berry is an associate member, and James Morse is an associate member as well. Also with us tonight is Noreen Stockman, who is the zoning administrator, Ashley DeMello, who is our recording secretary. We also have from the Falmouth IT Department, Thomas Cox and Adriana Pantano, and our friends at FCTV are helping us out tonight as well. The Falmouth zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town, and we consider requests for special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in the bylaws, which have been approved by town meeting and the Attorney General's office for the Commonwealth. All decisions that the board makes are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicant and from the public, and also to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing, and then present any pertinent information from the files, such as referrals from town departments and summarizing correspondences to the board. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, and time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant, and the public will be invited to comment as well. We ask that public comment should be directed only at the project itself. We ask you to please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. Public comment can include an opinion in favor or in opposition, or it might just simply be a question about the nature of the project. And once again, to provide public comment tonight, you can go to www.falmouthmass.us/zba and click the link for the Zoom virtual software. From there, there's a chat function, and again, we ask you to provide your name, address, and any question or concern you might have. The board will then either close or continue the hearing. When the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision by motion and vote of the board, the hearing will be closed. In the alternative, the board may continue the hearing to a future date and time. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And as for board discussion and decision, the board may then further discuss the project among ourselves and make a motion to deny or approve would be made and voted upon. A motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a super majority, is required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote, such as a three to two vote, would be a failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. Turning to our agenda for the night, we have public comment followed by two continuations, one new public hearing, and we have a number of items on our open meeting agenda. So first for tonight is public comment. This public comment is meant for anything that is not on the agenda for tonight. So if anyone out there has any sort of public announcement to make about something that is not on the agenda, go ahead and use the webinar chat via the Zoom software using your name and whatever you might have to announce to the board. And if anything comes in, I can make that announcement. And if anything does come in, I'll make the announcement if anything pops in the chat there. We will go on to our continuations. First, we have application 45-20 LeBlanc, 6 Lawrence Street, and T ticket. And Bob, do you mind reminding me who the voting members are on this? It might be the regular voting members, but I just want to make sure.
Yes, it's the regular voting numbers.
All right. Thank you, Bob. And for the applicant tonight, we have attorney Clower.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Onyx Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I represent the applicants, Robert and Shannon LeBlanc. It's been a few weeks, so I'm going to offer a brief refresher, and then we'll discuss what's happened since the last meeting and what we're trying to do. The LeBlancs are the owners of 6 Lawrence Street in East Falmouth, and they're seeking permission to add a second floor to the existing building. 6 Lawrence Street is located off of Maravista, a small lot of 4,800 square feet in the RC zoning district. Presently, it's a two-bedroom, single-family dwelling with a footprint of about 1,339 square feet. It has a number of nonconformities: the front yard setback, the easterly side yard setback, the westerly side yard setback, and the lot coverage by structures. The applicants are seeking to change this structure to accommodate their family needs. Simply put, they need more space, and they're proposing the addition of a second floor, results of which will not have a significant impact on the footprint of the structure. It will, however, eliminate the nonconforming westerly side yard setback, and will decrease lot coverage by structure slightly from 27.9% down to 27.7%. And though there is an increase of bedrooms from two to three, the property is on the Little Pond Sewer District, which allows for up to four bedrooms. As was discussed at the last hearing, the property is in an AE12 flood zone. And since that hearing, we have submitted an appraisal, a FEMA cost breakdown worksheet, and an opinion from a structural engineer relative to the foundation. As reflected on the FEMA cost breakdown worksheet, the proposed cost is less than 50% of the appraised value of the structure, and is therefore permissible under FEMA guidelines. This project does require a special permit under Sections 243(c) and 24069(e). We discussed this at the last hearing, but I'll run through some of the items. Relative to 243(c), there's no new nonconformity resulting from this proposal. There's no effect on the existing nonconforming easterly side yard setback or the front yard setback, and the nonconforming westerly side yard setback would be eliminated. The lot coverage by structure, which is nonconforming, would decrease slightly. Relative to 24069(e), the proposal has no impact on the views and visitors from public ways. There's no significant change to shadow. There's no effect on nitrogen, because it is on sewer and within a permissible amount of bedrooms. And relative to the size and height of the structure, we did submit a lot comparison worksheet previously, which showed 34 properties within the 300-foot radius. Of those 34, 27 have a larger gross floor area, and 19 have larger footprints. So even as proposed, this remains one of the more modest homes in the area. The applicant's proposal represents a significant improvement over the existing conditions and usefulness of the space. It will not create any new dimensional nonconformities. It eliminates one existing nonconformity, and it decreases the nonconforming lot coverage. Further, it meets the requirement 240216, and there's no adverse effects that overbalance the benefits outlined. And we were able to demonstrate, as requested, that it is permissible within the FEMA guidelines. For these reasons, and given these considerations, I'd ask that the board grant the special permit. I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Attorney Clower. And if any member of the public has any question, comment, or concern regarding this project, you can type it into the webinar chat. Please use your name, or full name, address, and any question or comment concern you might have. We will address it shortly. As for board questions, Bob, do you have any questions?
No, my only question would be, and thank you for those submissions, and the structural engineer. So he did say it can carry a second floor. Do they need to do anything to that to reinforce it all? They wouldn't need to bump out at all, would they? It would just be...
I don't believe so, but that is really outside of my area of expertise. Whatever they're doing will be compliant with the building code, and of course, you know, nobody here wants to design a house that can't be supported, but they're not changing the footprint. I don't believe there's any bump outs proposed.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Bob. Ken, anything?
So clarify for me again, how are we getting rid of the one, you know, setback nonconformity there? My rule of the shed?
The chimney's being removed.
Chimney's being removed?
Chimney's being removed.
And what's happening to the shed?
The shed is proposed to remain. It provides, you know, important storage for items that are difficult to get up and down the bulkhead.
Okay. You're a foot and a half away from the sideline there.
All right. James, anything? Ed?
No comment.
Thank you, Ed. Mary?
No comment.
Thank you, Mary. Scott, anything?
No, thank you. No questions.
All right. And no questions for myself. My issues were brought up by Bob and Ken, and I am not seeing any public comments at all in the webinar chat. Any follow-up questions by any chance? All right. If the board's heard everything that we need, would anyone like to make a motion?
Some motion to close?
I'll second it.
A motion to close by Bob and seconded by Scott. Roll call vote. Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ken?
And Foreman, aye.
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Scott?
Scott Zalinski, aye.
And TJ Hury, aye. So the hearing is closed. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve with conditions.
I'll second that again.
All right. So motion to approve with conditions made by Bob and seconded by Scott. Bob, would you like to get us started with findings?
Yeah, so 240-3c, 240-69e, 240-216, not substantially more detrimental, and increases utilization of the property. There'll be no change in nonconforming setbacks. There will be an elimination of the westerly nonconformity by the elimination of the chimney. The applicant did submit an independent appraisal of the property, as well as worksheet calculations to show that it meets the 50% rule, along with letters from a structural engineer that says that the current foundation can carry a second floor. Property will be going from two bedrooms to three bedrooms. Property is on the LPSSA sewer system, which does allow four bedrooms by right. They also did submit a lot comparison worksheet, properties in the mid-range. The shed that's on the property doesn't meet current setbacks.
All right. Anything else for findings?
No, just also that there's testimony that they don't believe they would need to bump out the foundation relying on the information that was submitted.
All right. Conditions?
Per plans, you also want to condition it on the approval by the building commissioner that the property does meet the 50% rule. It's also conditioned that the foundation is not being bumped out. If there needed to be an adjustment, they would need to come back. I also would like to have the shed moved in to meet current setback requirements. If construction affects... I guess if construction at all affects the connection to the town sewer, they would have to coordinate that with the wastewater department, and they'd also have to protect that connection during construction. All construction materials and vehicles should be kept on site. I just want to check on the referrals. Condition on the addition of dry wells or stormwater infiltration measures for the new structure. Condition on 99-1, a fixing of legible numbers required in time for compliance. Project must not direct any stormwater or runoff to public property butters the public rights of way. Noreen, were there any, I don't see it offhand, but were there any, where this closed the water, were there any comments from Comm. at all?
I don't think we did, but you want to add in your conditions about the assessors reviewing the property?
Yes, and add that the, once the structure is completed, the assessors department will have access to the property to go over the layout for their taxable purposes.
All right. Anything else?
No, I think that's it.
All right. So that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Bob and seconded by Scott. Roll call vote. Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ken?
And Foreman, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Scott?
Scott Zalinski, aye.
And TJ Hury, aye. So the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Attorney Clower.
Thank you very much, everyone. We appreciate your time.
All right. Up next, we have the continuation of application 47-20 Beechah, 33 Mariners Lane in Falmouth. And I believe for this, again, we have attorney Clower. And Bob, I believe the regular voting numbers are on this as well.
Yes, correct.
All right. Thank you. And attorney Clower?
Hello again. Again, for the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Onyx Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth. As you might recall from the last hearing on this, this case is incredibly similar to the case we just presented, but I'll go through and again, give a brief refresher as to what we're applying for, what we've done since the last meeting, and why I think the board can and should approve this. I represent Paul and Sarah Becta, the owners of 33 Mariners Lane. They're seeking permission to add an addition to their existing second floor of the dwelling. 33 Mariners Lane is located in a residential neighborhood at the end of Shore Street. It's on a lot of 9,118 square feet, and it's in the RC zoning district. Presently, that house is a four-bedroom, single-family dwelling with a footprint of 2,155 square feet. It's nonconforming as to the side yard setback being 9.7, where 10 is required, and lot coverage by structure being 23.6, where 20% is allowed by right, and up to 25% with a special permit. The existing ridge height on the house is 19 feet 11 inches. The applicants have owned this property for 15 years, and they're seeking in addition to the second floor to allow for the reconfiguration of the first floor space. The footprint will not change but for the landing step at the rear of the building. Lot coverage by structure will have a slight increase from 23.6 to 23.8%, only reflective of that rear step. However, the nonconformity is eliminated with the issuance of a special permit. The bedrooms will remain the same, and the proposed ridge height is 24 feet 7 inches. As was discussed at the last hearing, this property is in an AE12 flood zone. And since that hearing, we have submitted also an appraisal, a FEMA cost breakdown worksheet, and an opinion from a structural engineer relative to this foundation. As reflected on that worksheet, the cost is less than 50% of the appraised value of the structure, therefore permissible under the FEMA guidelines. This project also requires a special permit under 243(c) and 24069(e). Under 243(c), we're not creating any new nonconformities. The existing side yard setback is unaffected. And although the lot coverage by structures is increasing slightly from 23.6 to 23.8, an increase of only 20 square feet, that nonconformity is eliminated with the issuance of a special permit, and there's no significant impact to views and visitors. Relative to 24069(e), there's no impact on views and visitors from public ways. There's no significant change to shadow. There's no effect of nitrogen, same number of bedrooms. And as to the size, it is in line with the size and height of other homes in the neighborhood. We submitted a lot comparison worksheet of 35 properties within that 300-foot radius, and 15 of those have a larger gross building area, and 11 have larger footprints. This is by no means an outlier in that neighborhood. The applicant's proposal represents a significant improvement over the existing conditions of the usefulness and the usefulness of the space for it. There's no new dimensional nonconformity created, and it meets the requirements of 240216. There's no adverse effects that overbalance the benefits that were outlined. For these reasons, I would ask that the board grant the special permit, and I'm happy to address any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you, Attorney Clower. And if there's any member of the public who has any question, comment, or concern regarding this project, go ahead and type it into the webinar chat using your full name and address, and we will get to it shortly. As for board comments or questions, Bob, do you have anything?
I know, Kevin. Could you just repeat what the ridge height is, the new ridge height?
Sure. The existing is 19 feet 11 inches. The proposed is 24 feet 7 and 1/2 inches.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Bob. Ken, anything?
No.
James?
No questions. Thank you.
Ted?
No questions.
Mary?
I've looked at these plans extensively, and really took a very analytical look at them. And I think it's a very nice design.
Thank you.
Come here. Scott?
No questions.
Thank you, Scott. And I'm not seeing anything in the webinar chat at the moment. Any follow-up questions from the board?
Nope.
Board's heard everything that we needed. Is there a motion?
A motion to close?
Second.
Seconded.
All right. Motion to close by Bob and seconded by Ken. Roll call vote. Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ken?
And Foreman, aye.
Ted?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Scott?
Scott Zalinski, aye.
And TJ Hury, aye. So the hearing is closed. What would be the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve with conditions.
Second.
All right. Motion to approve with conditions made by Bob and seconded by Ed. Bob, would you like to start us off with findings?
Oh, yeah. 240-3c, 240-69e, 240-216, not substantially more detrimental, will increase the utilization. There's a nonconformity to side yard setback. It is located in the AE flood zone. They submitted a FEMA cost breakdown worksheet showing that it meets the 50% rule for FEMA guidelines. They submitted structural engineer's letter regarding the small portion that we would need to support the second floor. There is an increase in lot coverage from 23.6 to 23.8%, which is a minimal increase, where up to 25% is allowed by special permit. No, no, no new nonconformities. They did submit a lot comparison worksheet, which again shows that this project will be within the range. The current home has four bedrooms. It will be remaining of four bedrooms. And according to health department, the system that's on site allows for the four bedrooms, and because there's no additional bedroom, there's no need to upgrade the separate.
Very good. Any other findings? Both conditions?
Per plans. Addition of dry wells or stormwater infiltration measures for the new roof area at the minimum. Project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property butters the public rights of way. Again, building materials and vehicles should be kept on site. I guess we should just add in the findings regarding that 50% rule that we're going on the information that was submitted, but the building commissioner will be deciding if it meets his criteria.
Sure. Did you have a condition about that on the last one, Bob?
I think we added it in the last one.
Okay.
And again, we always have the condition that if there is any future change to plans, which actually could be caused if there's an issue with the building commissioner, they would come back.
All right. Anything else for findings?
Nope, unless anyone else can think of something.
Anyone else? Last chance to chime in?
Do you want to also add for the assessors to review?
Yes, good catch. So they'll allow the Falmouth Assessors Department to enter the property when completed for them to review the layout for their assessing purposes.
All right. Very good. Does that do it? All right. So the motion to approve with conditions was made by Bob and seconded by Ed. Roll call vote. Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ted?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Ken? Sorry, Ken, I missed you there.
That's all right. I don't always need to go second. And Foreman, aye.
Thank you. I try to keep it orderly with the Brady Bunch boxes we're dealing with these days. Scott?
Scott Zalinski, aye.
And TJ Hury, aye. So the motion to approve with conditions passes unanimously. Attorney Clower, thank you again.
Thank you very much, everyone. We appreciate your time on this.
All right. So that does it for our continuations. Moving on to our new public hearing, it is application 51-20 Heald, trustees 19 Chapquid Bars Road in West Falmouth.
So application number 051-20, being all persons deemed affected by the board of appeals under Section 11 of Chapter 48 of the Mass General Law, as you are hereby notified that Philip B. Heald Jr. and Jennifer J. Heald, trustees of Swansea, New Hampshire, have applied to the zoning board of appeals. have applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash twenty-three G of the Code of Falmouth to allow a third garage bay on subject property known as nineteen Chapquid Bars Road, West Falmouth, Mass. For referrals. For engineering, one, this application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Chapquid Bars Road and Kelvin Grove are public rights of way in this area. A new driveway is proposed, which will require filing a permit with the engineering division. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property butters of public rights of way. Four, we recommend that the board add a condition that requires the addition of dry wells or stormwater infiltration measures for the new roof area at a minimum. Five, we request that the board either require the applicant to obtain an approved driveway permit from engineering division prior to closing the hearing for this special permit, or that the board include the following condition in the special permit if it's approved. The applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the engineering division in the driveway permit. Note, we will require erosion and sediment controls to protect the public rights of way adjacent to this site during construction. Six, we request the following condition be included in any approval. Construction of this project shall follow the attached soil erosion and sediment control standards. Adherence to these requirements will be monitored through the driveway permit process. And seven, we request the following condition be included, which is section ninety-nine one, a fixing of legible numbers required and time limit for compliance. From the water department, the existing home has a one-inch water service. The plan shows a new water service adjacent to a new gas service. The department standards available online at our webpage require a five-foot horizontal separation from other utilities and a ten-foot separation from sewer and septic facilities. The final approved plan should show the required separation. Conservation has no comments. Assessors department, no comments. Planning, no comments. Fire department has no issues with the project as drawn. I don't see anything from help. There is one letter that was submitted from the butter. This is dated Thursday, October fifteenth at three thirty-seven from a Cheryl Quinn at sixteen Kelvin Grove, Falmouth, Mass. It says zoning board members. It was with dismay that I received your letter regarding a three-car garage at number nineteen Chapquid Bars Road. Your hearing is about three months too late. The third bay of this garage is now standing and has been so for a few months. If this level of competence is standard throughout the town committees, the town is in serious trouble. No excuses. And that sign, Cheryl Quinn. That's the only letter that's been submitted.
Thank you, Bob. And the voting members on this are the regular voting members. If any members of the public have any question, comments, or concerns regarding this project, go ahead and type it into the webinar chat using your full name and address with whatever comment or concern you may have and we will address it shortly. I've already, I see that a couple have already come in, so thank you for that. We will get to it soon. So with that, Attorney Clower for the applicant again.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Onette Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth. And I represent the applicants, Philip Heald and Jennifer Heald, the owners of nineteen Chapquid Bars Road. There are, they are requesting a special permit for a three-car garage. That three-car garage is approximately eight hundred and fourteen square feet. This property, Chapquid, nineteen Chapquid Bars Road, is located in West Falmouth on a lot of just over half an acre. It's twenty thousand, twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-two square feet. And it's in the RB zoning district. Currently, the applicant is in the midst of construction. They're raising and rebuilding the existing home. It's a one and a half story, four-bedroom dwelling. This property's been in the Heald family for twenty-five years. Philip and his wife have owned it for the last three. They're looking to make it a more full-time residence. And as with many generational homes, the families look to make use of it. They have children. The children have children. The additional garage space minimizes clutter on the lot. As noted, the construction process has begun. The structural plans that were submitted to the town did show a header for the third garage bay in anticipation of filing for a special permit. And the proposed garage, as noted, is eight hundred and sixteen square feet. And as the lot is under thirty thousand square feet, it does require a special permit. There's no standards that are set forth in the bylaw for a three-car garage, so we look to standards of two forty, two sixteen. The threshold of question is, does the proposed use have adverse effects which overbalance the beneficial effects to the neighborhood and to the town? This lot is more than adequate in size. Doesn't change the nature. The proposal doesn't change the nature, the proposed use, the proposed nature of the use of the lot. Same dwelling, same number of bedrooms. It only increases the owner's utilization of the existing space. There's no impact on traffic flow or safety. I believe that this board can and should grant this special permit and I'm happy to address any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you, Attorney Clower. And I do see a number of public comments rolling in and we'll address that shortly. As for board comments, Bob, do you have anything? Would you like to get us started?
I guess my first question would be Attorney Clower, how come there was no mention in the application that the structure has already been built?
It's, the structure's in mid-construction. I think we've seen a number of cases where we have a structure that's mid-construction that's applied for a three-car garage. I can think of two in the past few months that underwent a similar process.
So in this case, we had some engineering comments that if this went through, there would be soil erosion and control standards that they would want. Since this has been gone through a construction process already, have you made, have they made any adjustments for any of these soil erosion control standards during construction?
Yes.
And what were those?
The, I mean, they, I, I can, we, we can have Christian Andre, who's with Longfellow Design Elevated. But he just indicated to me that they've been working with the engineer to implement the soil control, soil condition controls.
So, so have any of those been in use yet, or that's something that you're looking to do now?
My understanding is that they've been using them, but I'll let Christian speak to that because I haven't been on the site for construction purposes.
When I went there to the site today, I wasn't sure if that was the right structure at first because there's no, there's nothing posted. The person that was on the lot, I asked him if that was number nineteen and the workman wasn't sure. He suggested I check the dock box for the building permit. And the dock box seems to be empty and there is nothing posted. So do you know why there's no building permit posted at the site?
I, I do not. That's not something that I've, that's a first question, the first impression for me. I've never had that come up and I, I don't know why they, why it's not posted.
You mentioned it on the, on the building permit plan, it showed a header for a three garage bay. Did the building permit that you secured allow for a third garage bay?
It showed the header for the third garage bay. I don't believe that the third garage, the, the plans would be resubmitted showing the actual bay itself, but the framing for the bay is on the structural plans that were submitted.
And then, and then when I was there, the actual door entrance for the third car garage bay had already been cut out of the building? So is that something that was allowed on the current building permit?
The building permit right now shows a flat front and there'll be, if this permit is allowed, there will be a revised plan submitted to the building department.
And if by chance this building permit wasn't allowed, what would, what would their plans be? They would just have to reclose up that entrance?
That's correct.
That's all the questions I have right now.
Thank you, Bob. Ken, anything?
Well, I would just say that I felt similarly quite surprised when I went to the site and there was a three-car garage for which we had not yet issued a permit. And I'm not quite sure what the excuse is, but this seems to be a pattern that some builders in town do is they don't build according to the plan that they initially submitted. And I just don't think that's acceptable. Certainly does not make me sympathetic in terms of wanting to approve it.
My only response to that, Mr. Foreman, is that if the, the, the structure was finished and it wasn't compliant with the plans, then they wouldn't be able to get a certificate of occupancy. We're here tonight to request that the special permit be granted, in which case we'll be submitting the revised plans so that what's approved and what's built are exactly the same.
But you do understand the idea is you get the permit first and then you do the work.
I understand. I do.
James?
Ken has addressed my concerns about asking for forgiveness versus getting permission.
Thank you, James. Ed?
It's the same. When I drove up, I saw the same thing. You know, it's happening, keeps happening and happening. What the heck can we do to stop it? How to get it right the first time? Because obviously we're going to put a three-car garage the way that place has been framed. The other thing is I have one question. It shows a set of stairs going up the exterior on the southwest elevation. Is that, what's going to be upstairs in the garage?
I, I don't know, Mr. Van Kuren. The plans that we submitted are only relative to the change that's being requested as to the, as to the third garage bay.
It looks like it's an apartment going up there, maybe.
I, I don't know. It's, those plans would have been submitted to the building department. When we've, when we've made these change special permits, we have only submitted the plans reflecting the area that's actually changing.
Mary? Thank you, Ed. Mary, anything?
Yeah, what, what would the motivation be for going ahead and constructing something that isn't in the plans? I went by there too and I was shocked. Is that, is there, is there something in the bylaws that allows for a retroactive approval?
I believe the board has issued a number of approvals for after the fact in the past. But I would say that, you know, oftentimes what we see is the special permit process can be lengthy and people would, understanding that the board can of course say no, apply for a building permit showing a two-car garage and then come back and during that construction process, apply for a third garage bay. I'm not aware of anything that prohibits that. And of course, if the board was to say no, they'd have to address that. But I think.
But they went ahead and built it.
I, 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 I recognize that.
There are cases where that's happened in the past and it's acceptable?
I know there's, I know there's been a number of cases where issues have come to light that people have come back to permit after the fact. But I think that realistically, whereas we're still in the construction process, there's been no CO issue. There wouldn't be a CO issued if the plans didn't meet the construction that exists.
I find it quite appalling.
Thank you, Mary. Scott?
Attorney Clower, do you have, because there was no permit posted, I couldn't check to see what the sign-off was for the foundation. Do you know when the foundation was poured, what the date of that was?
I, I do not.
Do you know if the, the foundation was poured in its entirety to accept three garage doors?
I think that the, I can't speak to the construction methodology, Mr. Zalinski. But I think that the, the size of the building is, would remain the same whether it's three, three doors or two.
My, my question is, is reference to the cutouts for three. If that, I didn't, I don't see a seam in, in that and I didn't see where it was cut after the fact. So it leads me to believe that that was set up for three garage bay doors. It was poured. I'm asking the question, was that the case when it was poured, or is this an addition?
I, I, I don't have the answer to that, Mr. Zalinski. I'm sorry.
Mr. Andre, does somebody have the answer to that?
I would say that, first of all, you're muted. Oh, you don't hear me? Can you hear me?
You know, you're muted.
Turn me on.
I got you. Can you hear me now?
He can hear you.
Are we hearing him through Attorney Clower's feed?
I, I think so.
Cause his, his box shows as muted.
How about now?
We have you.
That's better, yeah.
So I'm not the project manager for this specific project. But I'd say that I believe that the foundation poured with the intent that they could overlap or the cutout. And if in fact, they didn't get approved, they could put like a block wall on top of the lead foundation and then frame on top.
I'm sorry, Christian. Can you repeat that? Because it seemed to be broken up when you started the, the audio.
It might be getting picked up from Attorney Clower's feed. I'm not, I'm not too sure. But Mr. Andre, if you could repeat yourself, my apologies.
That's okay. So what I said was that I'm not the project manager for this specific project, so I can't speak to this to the matter, you know, a hundred percent certainty of the intent. However, I would say that lab of the foundation poured with the intent of the cutout. And if in fact, this did not get approved, that they could then block in the cutout and then stucco it and then frame on top of that to close that in.
So you, so I'm back to Mr. Clower. So Attorney Clower, so you could, you could understand maybe our, our hesitance to, to, to be sympathetic to this, knowing that this garage was designed to do this very thing when it was poured. And then your contingency plan was in case we didn't approve it, you guys will block it up and put another sill on there and everything else. So that's why you're not getting any sympathy because it looks like there was clear intent. And, and I have an issue with that as well.
I, I'm not sure why we're. Keep trying that, I'm sorry. I can say that I've presented to this board for three-car garages on a number of occasions. And I've seen a number of applications come up that I haven't been the one to handle. I've never seen the board have much of an issue with any three-car garage. So I think that someone's expectation that it would likely be approved is reasonable and grounded in some, some history.
So you assumed that it was going to be not a big deal?
No, I didn't, I didn't assume anything, Mr. Zalinski. I'm saying that I think that someone thinking that a three-car garage receiving approval was more likely than not is, is a reasonable position to take. I'm not saying I made that assumption. I'm applying for the permit for the applicant. I think that the, I, I think when you look at the merits of it, I think when you look at the standards of two forty, two sixteen regarding special permits for a three-car garage, there's really no standards. And I understand the board's concern and I understand the board's frustration. But I would say that I think that this is an approvable project. The way it was approached may have been inappropriate and, you know, that is what it is unfortunately. But I think that the board still can, if they choose to, grant the special permit. And I think that on the merits, there's no, there's no downsides to that.
So, so given the testimony by Mr. Andre, it, it would be no big deal if we decline this to, to fill that door back in, right?
I wouldn't say it would be no big deal. I'd have to discuss it with the client. They'd have to look at their plans. But it could be addressed that way. If, if the board isn't going to approve it, it certainly could be addressed that way. That's no one's preference.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinski. And
I have another question or two, if, if it's okay.
Go ahead, Ken, because I'm trying to formulate my thoughts into a question.
Yeah, because I thought Ed raised an interesting point about access above the garage. And it's not clear to me from the plans, what is above the garage and what the plans are for that. So I wonder if that could be explained. And also, what is the, is there a new, it looks like they put in a new septic. Is that correct?
It does appear that way, yes.
And what is the capacity for that?
Four bedroom.
Okay. And how many bedrooms are there?
There were four and there will be four. In response to your question about the area above the garage, Mr. Foreman, I don't have that, the answer to that question. But I would just note that that was whatever was approved by the building department with the initial building permit. There's no change being proposed to that. The only change is whether or not there's a third garage bay.
Anything else, Ken?
I'm still, you know, I'd like to know more about what's up there. Their plumbing, is there? You know, someone knows.
I, I, I don't have, I don't have the plans, Mr. Foreman, unfortunately. But I would just say, you know, that whatever is up there is what was approved by the building department with the building permit. It presumably, it looks on, from the exterior, that it's part of the living space of the house. But that's not what we're seeking to change. We're only looking for relief relative to the third garage bay.
Okay.
James, I have one more, if there's time.
Go ahead, Scott, because I, I'm still trying to formulate my thoughts into a question.
Are you aware that the plan submitted is wrong for the garage?
I'm sorry, Mr. Foreman.
The third garage door shows a 12-foot opening. And if you, I took a picture of it, it's clearly the same as the second door. And maybe the first one, but that, that's not a 12-foot door at the, the third garage door that's been proposed. If you look at the plan.
No, I, I see, I see what you're saying. I
So the plan's incorrect as well?
So I, I have two questions too. So Mr. Andre had said that he was not the project manager. Who is the project manager?
Rob Cabral.
And would he know? I'm going back to the comments on engineering, because when I was out there and, of course, it had rained, there is some erosion issues out there. So I would like a concrete answer if they have actually installed during construction, if they have handled any of these erosion sediment controls, or if that's something they did not do because it wasn't required, because they didn't come for a special permit in advance.
We have an engineer drawing.
Mr. Andre is simply saying that they, they have an engineer drawing and they've been following the erosion control set forth by the engineer.
By the town or their engineer?
Specifically for erosion control. And we set up a whole drainage plan, we have it.
He says that the engineer was hired specifically for erosion control and they set up a drainage plan and installed it.
So, so according, according to the engineer's referral, that they deal with these sediment control standards, they, they need monitoring throughout the driveway permit process. Because they've already added a three-car opening for the third bay, have they pulled the driveway permit?
I don't know the answer to that.
So I guess one of my concerns is, which is a little separate from, I, I, I agree with the rest of the board. There's a, there's a problem happening and it seems to happen more over time that projects are put up and then it's again, that forgiveness after the fact. But my issue is that when someone comes for a special permit, we get referrals for very specific conditions that are put in there to protect the abutters, the streets, and they have to do with individual projects. And because they didn't come to this board in advance, none of those conditions were ever set. So the engineers clearly had issues, and that's why they have referral comments. And I understand that your statement is that you have an engineer that's kind of doing what he thinks they should be doing, but it doesn't seem that the town was involved in that process at all. And I just want to make sure that you heard the referral from engineering tonight, and that's throughout the construction process. In this case, you're at the end of the construction process. So at some point, you know, I'd like to know, it sounds right now that you didn't follow the referral as it's being requested by the town, you kind of did your own monitoring. But we don't even have any of that in the file because you hadn't applied for the special permit that you needed. It just went up.
Well, my, my only response to that, Mr. Dugan, is, you know, if the, the, the building would be effectively the same with or without the third garage bay. And the so without the special permit, there, there is no requirement for the town's soil condition control program. I think that if we're looking for a benefit to granting a special permit, it makes it subject to that, make it, makes it subject to that process. That said, you know, the, they followed the protocol, the appropriate protocols for a building permit having been issued. What brings it to the level of the engineering department requesting this is the special permit. I can inquire as to whether or not a driveway permit has been requested as of yet. I don't know the answer to that. And I can find out more information about the erosion control program that's been implemented to this point.
It seems to me that we're going to need a continuation. I, I'm not saying we should close, you know, move on yet, but
Right. Attorney Clower, I'm trying to formulate this in a, in a question. You'd agree with me that applying for a special permit after the fact completely erodes the public's confidence in the public hearing process, right?
Because I mean, yeah. I think that during the construction process, requesting a special permit for a change is, is appropriate. I think having done that change already is probably inappropriate.
Because it's, I haven't even gotten to the public comments yet and they're all hitting the same point and I'll, I'll get to it shortly. But, you know, we're, we're a volunteer public board and, and this erodes confidence in not only this board, but town hall officials as well, whether it be the building commissioner or the ZBA administrator or anyone else. So I, I can understand why the board's troubled by this. I'd like to get to public comment, because there are a number of people that did type in. And I've been told that I have to read this out verbatim. And the, the comments did roll in as the discussion progressed, so it'll be a minute. Neil DeAngelis from 139 Nashawina Street in West Falmouth. There appears to already be a third garage, so how is it that a variance is now being requested? From Margaret Marigan. Is it okay that a garage is already built? From Tom Marigan, 141 Nashawina Street. How did this violation come to the attention of the town? Was there a stop order? From Jay, so I believe this is Neil DeAngelis again. Is it, it is not a proposed garage? It is already existing, and that's the question. From Tom Marigan again. Clower is wrong. This is not rebuilding. It is 100% new construction. The smaller home was raised. From Jay's account again, it says it's already built. From Margaret Marigan again, it is completed and shingled, and that's in all cap locks. From Tom Marigan. Clower is wrong. This third bay is not mid-construction. The third bay garage was built long before the application for a special permit. And they have continued to work this three-car garage well after the special permit application was submitted. Is CO is not a solution to a violation? That seems intentional. So there is no penalty for this? How can the board allow this to go forward? The lawyer's answer is insulting. It was poured as three bays. Tom Marigan, we are abutters. It was poured for three in June or early July. It's disrespectful, shows no regard for the law. From Margaret Marigan, in addition, it was this week that the garage was shingled. Assumed, okay, couldn't wait. From Jay's account again, there is only a window in the back of the upper garage area. So why do they need a set of stairs from there to the ground? And I think that does it for public comment. It is tough to navigate the webinar chat. So Attorney Clower, I didn't know if you wanted to address any of those at all, or?
Some, some of the more spirited comments that have, that have received in, in our Zoom meetings. But I think we, you know, we've, we've presented our information. I, I stand by the information that I have presented. It's clear that the board would like some more information. And even with that information, it's not clear where the board will go. But I would like to make sure that I have written down the things that you're looking for. And I'd be happy to assemble that prior to the next meeting. I, I know that Mr. Dugan is curious as to what the soil control system that's been used to this point is. And I think I'm correcting that, Mr. Dugan, and if I'm wrong, please correct me. And what plan we have on that. We, there's a question as to whether or not a driveway permit has been requested. If not, we certainly can. And I know that Mr. Foreman has inquired about the second floor, which though not part of the special permit application, I'd be happy to obtain and provide to you prior to the next meeting. Is there any other information that has been requested that I'm missing?
So I'd like to know what date the foundation was poured to show the three bays. One of the public comments this, this evening said that it was done in June or July. The reason I'd like to know, I'd like to know how far previous to your application for this, this was actually in existence. I would like to know, Mr. Clower, and I know you're, you know, kind of an in-between situation here, but I would like to know why there was no mention to the board with the application that this, that this structure was even put up the way it is now. I mean, the only way we found out is we drove out there. It seems like somebody would have known by now. And I don't know how this was caught. Did, did the building department refer you back here when one of the inspectors, without, without a building permit?
Actually, Bob, if, if I could stop you for just a moment, someone else did ask, Tom Marigan, can the board chair tell us how the violation came to be known and is there a stop order? Attorney Clower, I'm not aware of any violation on the property, but if you could, if you could let us know.
I mean, we, we submitted this special permit application of our own volition. There was nothing, no one prompted us to do it. The applicant, I spoke with the applicant, he explained what he wanted to do, explained that he was mid-construction, which is something that we've seen before. I didn't think, you know, it was that unusual of a request. And it was applied for. But there was no stop work order, there's no violation that's been cited. Understanding that, you know, realistically during the construction process, if, if we, if they were to request a certificate of compliance or occupancy with, with a building that doesn't meet the plans or has something that requires a special permit without the benefit of that special permit, they're simply not going to get that certificate of occupancy. So that's where we are.
Thank you, Attorney Clower.
Bob also Bob raised some points about the engineering and I thought the answer was a little ambiguous, whether drainage mitigation that had been requested by the town engineer was being implemented or not. Not by their own, not the decisions of their own engineer, whether they were conforming to the town engineer's recommendation.
I don't know if the engineer's plan conforms to the town's specifications, but I do know that they have a plan that they've implemented, which I'm happy to obtain a copy of. And of course, if, if the special permit is granted, then they'd be subject to the town engineer's requirements. And that would likely be the case with the driveway permit, the issuance of a driveway permit as well.
Wouldn't it have shown on this plan? A drainage plan would have been on the same plan as the site plan. Shows the septic, it shows where the old, the old septic was, but it doesn't show a drainage plan.
It was, I, I've been told it was modified after, after the site plan was prepared.
Attorney Clower, can, don't you think all of this should have come to the special permit hearing? All the answers to the questions, it, it gets tiresome. Or don't you agree it would be tiresome for you to keep asking the questions that are germane to this hearing? And get the answer, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know?
So respectfully, Mr. Zelinsky, these are questions that I've never been asked before by this board. They're questions I've never seen come up in, relative to a special permit application for a three-car garage. Their, their construction methodology questions, and I'm, I'm, I don't know the answers to them. I don't like saying I don't know to questions, but sometimes I don't know is the correct answer, because I'm not going to tell you something that's incorrect. I, I think that it is some of the information that's been requested, I understand why the board is asking for it, but it's not information that's ever been requested before. And I'm in front of this board quite often. So I don't think it's on me that I don't have something that I've never been asked for before. That being said, I'm happy to provide it to you.
Okay, with all due respect, this isn't an everyday case. Very, would you say very infrequently does it come before us that's already completed?
I can tell you that in the past few, six months, I know of two other three-car garages that were applied for during the construction process, my own included. And I, I, it was not, these questions were not presented at those hearings, it was not presented as an issue at those times. So I wouldn't have expected them to be an issue at this time.
Is the board expecting anything else from Attorney Clower, since this is going to be continued?
I just would, I, I would say that, as Scott said, we'd like, we'd like the plant to reflect the drainage. You know, that, that they called for dry wells and rain gardens, and I didn't see any of those on the plan.
Happy to provide that, Mr. Foreman.
I think we also should get the information about the second floor ladder, stairway, what's on the second floor.
Sure.
Okay. Doesn't look like it comes
I'm sorry.
Sure, go ahead, Mary.
Go ahead.
I also think that and I'm, I'm looking at a, something that was provided in the chat function. Is there
Did I miss something? I'm, I'm sorry, Mary.
No, you didn't, but is there going to be a stop order until there is actually approval or not? Because they're saying today there was shingling that went on. So maybe there's still construction to be had. It seems like there shouldn't be any further construction until it's voted on.
Thank you, Mary. I'm not sure if the board has any power with a stop order. I think that would come from the building commissioner, but I'll defer to Noreen if
Yes, so I did have a conversation with the building commissioner. The way he explained it to me was that the plan showed a two-car garage and that was the permit that they had issued. He did note that the plan showed a, I believe it was referenced as maybe phase two, where they would presumably ask for the third car garage bay. So he explained to me that the permit was properly issued. However, the third bay should not be constructed prior to approval.
It just seems to me we would be remiss if we didn't say that whoever it is that would is constructing should in deference, at least to us, stop construction now.
My, my only response to Miss, Miss Barry is that there was a building permit for the entirety of a house and what we're looking at is a third garage bay. I think it's perfectly reasonable that nothing further happened relative to the garage, but they are in a but they are in a process of building a, a whole house.
Well, that's exactly what I was referring to is the garage.
Oh, then, I mean, I.
Stop construction on a house that already has been approved.
I, I just want, I just wanted to clarify that.
For us tonight, asking for, for the.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify.
I'm, I'm prepared to move that we continue.
Just, just, just one more question when you go over the other information is also get back to the information regarding the water department. They had concerns regarding separation of the water lines and gas lines.
Sure, a revised plan was submitted to uh, the zoning board uh, a few weeks ago. That did show a separation.
So Attorney Clower, the, the board might not have any power with a, with a stop order, uh, but can you make any sort of representation that the, there won't be any sort of construction on the third bay uh, until this application's resolved?
I can certainly tell the homeowner and the builder that that should not be the case.
I'd appreciate that, because I, I don't want to interfere with the rest of the house, but at, at least with that third garage there.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I, I know we don't have control over that, but, but I think in this case where it's up, that we should at least request, put a request into the building department that just regarding the garage, because we're continuing this, that there'd be no, no work done on that garage bays, on the bay. At least put a formal request in. I mean, you've got requests for um, butters and people that have asked tonight why it wasn't done before. I personally don't know why it wasn't done before, maybe there's legality for it, but I don't see anything stopping us to have the administrator um, just send an informal request to the building commissioner that we're reviewing a project that um, doesn't seem to have a permit for the third bay that seems to exist. It's way past, you know, beginning construction. And at this point, we would just informally request that he stop any further work on the garage bay.
Sure. And this is the nature of the Zoom hearings, that people can uh, type away while we are having the discussion. I, I do want to continue the matter, but I'll get these two uh, comments in before we do continue it. Uh, Tom Merican says they have been going full steam on the garage for the last two weeks. And uh, from that account that says Jay, I, I forget the name, but it was listed earlier. Uh, what is the answer regarding the stairway? Regarding the stairway, uh, Attorney Clower is going to get that answer for us for the next hearing. Uh, because we are heading to, toward a continuance. And uh, was that a motion by?
Yes.
We'll, we'll leave it, we'll leave it to Mr. Dugan to make any sort of motion. Uh, and you're muted, Bob, sorry about that.
Before we continue the hearing, I would make a motion that we send a um, a request to the building commissioner that where the third bay currently exists in its long past beginning construction, that we are asking him to stop work on the garage bay. And along with that motion, I would also like him to let us know, um, is there any reason the building permit um, is not being posted on site?
All right, uh, so we'll, we'll make that a separate motion from any sort of.
All right, I'm, I'll second that.
All right, thank you, Ken. So that's a motion by Bob, seconded by Ken, uh, roll call vote, Bob.
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ken?
Ken Foreman, aye.
Uh, Scott?
Bob Zelinski, nay.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren. Hey.
What was that? Was that a nay yet?
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah, yay.
Yay? Like thumbs up? Yes? Sorry, there's, there's a bad connection. Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, so that is four to one, or TJ Hurry, uh, yes, so the motion carries four to one. Uh, is there another motion to continue the?
Yes, I would move that we continue and, and Noreen, when's the next?
Uh, November 5.
Well, let's continue this to November 5, right here in Zoom Hall.
Very good. Is there a second on that motion for a continuance?
Yeah.
Okay, motion to continue to November 5th, uh, made by Ken, seconded by Bob. Roll call vote, Bob.
Uh, Robert Dugan, aye.
Ken?
Ken Foreman, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Scott?
Bob Zelinski, nay.
And TJ Hurry, aye. So uh, it passes continuance uh, four to one. It is continued to November 5th. Uh, Attorney Clower, thank you for your time tonight.
Uh, thank you very much. We'll see you in three weeks.
All right, so that does it for our uh, public hearings. We are on to open meeting. Uh, first, we have voting the minutes from August 20th, September 3rd, and October 1st. We'll take them one by one. Uh, August 20th, has everyone had a chance to?
Make a motion, yeah, make the motion for August 20th to accept the minutes as written.
I'll second it.
All right, uh, motion to approve the minutes from August 20th, made by Ed, seconded by Scott, roll call vote, Bob.
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ken?
Ken Foreman, aye.
James?
James Morse, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
Scott?
Bob Zelinski, aye.
And TJ Hurry, aye. Aye, passed unanimously. Uh, we have the minutes from September 3rd. Does everyone have a chance to review those?
Yes, and I'll make a motion to to accept the, approve the minutes of 3 September.
I'll second it.
All right, motion to approve the minutes from September 3rd, uh, by Ed, seconded by Scott, roll call vote, Bob.
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ken?
Ken Foreman, aye.
James?
James Morse, aye.
Ted?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
Scott?
Bob Zelinski, aye.
And TJ Hurry, aye. So that passes unanimously. Uh, the minutes from October 1st.
We are tabling those?
Sure. All right, so we will table the minutes from October 1st. Uh, up next, let's see here. All right, so there are a number of administrative requests on the agenda for tonight. Uh, I just want to remember, remind board members and any members of the public that might be out there as well uh, that these are essentially not public hearings, they're administrative requests. Uh, we do not accept any sort of public comment or any sort of testimony from the applicant or the applicant's representatives. Uh, it's on a very rare occasion that we may allow that. Uh, but in general, we, we don't. Uh, so it's basically on the papers, anything that's submitted to the board, these administrative approvals. Uh, regarding uh, the 40Bs that are on the agenda for tonight, uh, the board has options regarding that. Uh, there are requests for insubstantial changes uh, that we will be addressing. Uh, so for the purpose of the board's administrative approval for these requests for insubstantial changes, the board has essentially two options. Uh, the board reviews the insubstantial request. Uh, if the board finds it insubstantial, it is basically an administrative approval and uh, the decisions are amended uh, as we vote on them tonight. Uh, in the event that we do not find uh, that the proposed changes are insubstantial, uh, that would essentially find them substantial, uh, which would trigger a, a public hearing at the applicant's uh, basically the, the applicant's discretion if they do want to go forward with that. Uh, and of course, that would be uh, the legally identified butters would be notified, and there would be a public hearing process to address any sort of changes to those applications. Uh, so I just wanted to get that out of the way because we do have a number of those on the list tonight. Uh, and there are a number of people that are attendees, and I'm sure many people are watching at home uh, for these administrative approvals. And up first, we have uh, the board to discuss the bond agreement and vote anticipated regarding Locus Field LLC, which is Beach Plum Path 430 Locus Field Road, Application 6-19. And before we start any sort of discussion on that, I just want to ask Noreen, uh, was it the intention to vote the bond separately? Or is this, okay, so this is not, uh, th- this is our, an up, up or down vote for the board to accept the bond? It's not uh, a request for an ins- insubstantial change?
Well, so it technically is a request for an insubstantial change, but, but I would suggest is that the board look at this particular request separate from the other insubstantial changes requested. Um, I'm happy to update the board if you would like. Uh, basically, what happened was that the developer was uh, agreeable to install the water main to the easement. Uh, there was not clarity at the time of the hearing whether the water main could be extended through the Eversource easement. So as of today, the water main has been installed to the easement. Uh, the developer, in consultation with his attorney and with our town council, have been agreeable to post a bond that the DPW has determined is sufficient to ensure that the water main would be looped through the easement.
Mr. Chairman, um, I need to recuse myself from um, from the Locus Field case.
And thank you, Scott. So Scott will be recusing himself.
And I should also, I guess.
Ed, you'll be recu- you'll be recusing yourself as well?
Yeah, it was recommended this morning, a year earlier that I do that.
Very good. That's all we need to hear.
Both that one and the next one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question about the process. As my understanding on these insubstantial change requests, that there's a 20-day period in which we have to do something from the time it was received. And my question is whether during this time, which is during the COVID time and the various rules we have, is it still 20 days?
So I can answer that for you. Uh, because of COVID and the governor's declaration for the state of emergency, those deadlines are no longer currently in effect. So traditionally, if an application is filed for an insubstantial change, the board has to make a determination within 20 days of that filing. Because of the governor's declaration, you're not currently held to that timeline.
Thank you, Noreen.
And thank you, Mary. That's uh, that's actually something I, I didn't think of, so thank you for asking that.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I have a question too. So, um, when we're looking at these administrative for insubstantial or substantial change, and now that we know that we aren't specifically held to a timeline due to COVID, um, is it ever appropriate to ask for more information if we need it?
Ask for more information regarding an, an insubstantial change?
Regarding whatever the individual request is. I mean, is this, is this, is this, is this an actual discussion between the board, or are we just looking at what was submitted? And just deciding is it substantial or insubstantial, or can we ask questions about what was submitted or what may not have been submitted?
No, Noreen, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm, I, I think these requests are just on the papers that are submitted, and we don't have any inter- interaction with the applicant if we, if we have any additional questions, right?
I mean, that's, that's basically correct. I think that's, you know, what you folks have chosen for the board. I know in the past you've exercised some discretion uh, regarding some interaction with a representative for an applicant um, to get clarity. I think perhaps in these circumstances, if, if the board has concerns about whether uh, something is substantial or not, you would look at uh, discussing some findings relating to the material you've looked at, and that if you want to have a further conversation, it would probably be, probably be based on your finding that something is substantial versus insubstantial.
So if I might, so, so where um, I, I, actually, I don't know where we start. Are we going to start with Locus Field first, the, the uh, the water request?
Yeah, technically, we're on, we're on the bond request right now.
Okay, so if we're on the bond request, I guess my question was, Noreen, I know that you were um, involved in, in negotiating or dealing with the bond. So I guess um, I could actually ask you, uh, my question was um, were you supplied during that process of when the uh, developer actually had applied to Eversource um, regarding the, the easement? Because I know that when we originally looked at the project, that was discussed in length, and it seemed at that point the applicant understood that they would be applying to Eversource to actually go through the easement. Was that actually done?
So I don't have a copy of an application. I do have an email from a representative for Locus Field, and they clearly stated that the, the request to go through the easement was filed and that they were following up on that.
But they didn't give any kind of a date or anything? They just said that they had filed something?
Uh, no, I think the dating that they provided was relating to contacts they had had with Eversource.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Is it?
Or Noreen could address?
Is it relevant to ask a question about how much this bond is for?
I would guess that that would be uh, public information. Um, the estimated cost to complete the um, looping of the water main through the easement was estimated to be $30,000. I provided that figure to the DPW. They reviewed it and they were in agreement that that would be a sufficient amount. And town council has prepared a legal document for the bond that he has reviewed, uh, council for, the developer has reviewed and agreed to as well.
And my other question would be, why is the bond necessary?
So apparently functioning with approval from Eversource, there's not a way to determine a timeline with them when they would get around to approving it. So the developer has essentially asked for permission to proceed with construction and not be held up by waiting for the Eversource approval. So what they have offered is to post the bond, and there is a clause with the bond that they are not able to get a certificate of occupancy for the first dwelling completed unless the water main has been looped. And if it hasn't, then the town would potentially retain the bond and loop the water main themselves. So the, the effect of the bond is to allow the developer to commence construction on the dwellings while the Eversource process is being completed.
But there's no occupancy until the water line is actually moved. Is that correct?
So that would be correct.
Is um, and Noreen, I don't know if you have any way of knowing this, is Eversource aware that this is a 40B project? I can't provide any of my own testimony, but generally speaking, utilities are pretty receptive uh, when they hear anything about a project that has to do with affordable housing.
Yeah, I would presume that the developer would have provided that information, particularly if it helps their stance or get, you know, this being more timely reviewed, that they would pass that information on.
All right, I, I would hope that they've al- already done that, and if they haven't, I would strongly suggest that they mentioned Eversource, that this is uh, an, an affordable housing project.
So I have another question. So when we heard this project originally, and there was a lot of discussion regarding the looping of the main, specifically from the waste, from the water superintendent. And I know that in those discussions and in the hearings we had, and of course, they were public at that time, a little different, and that was Zoom. One of the big issues appeared to be with the looping was, you know, health and safety regarding the water pressure for the hydrants.
So there was testing done with the water main extended to the easement. And while there was water pressure, it was not to the pressure level that the town prefers. So there's a clear understanding that there is a need for the water main to be looped.
And the town wasn't, the town wasn't present during those water tests, correct?
That's my understanding. However, as part of the bond, it's clearly stated that the town will properly be advised and will be present for the next testing.
And one follow-up question from me would be, given that the water pressure appears to not be at the place the town wants it, is there any risk in having the construction go forward? And doing the looping, and is there any possibility that the looping will result in again, not sufficient water pressure? And I can assure you, I have no background in hydraulics, whatever the study is. I would have absolutely no skill and knowledge of that. It would seem to me if we heard from what the water department says and an assurance that something isn't going to be constructed. And then at the point that they have, they go for occupancy permits, it isn't at the health and safety level that we would like it to be. I mean, it just seems like, I know nobody can give assurances.
Right. So I've had.
It seems like a risk that we could have assurances to approve.
Yeah. So I've had multiple conversations with the water superintendent, with the head of the DPW, et cetera. The water superintendent, in order to sort of effectuate this looping, was agreeable to have the town essentially pay for the connection at the other end of the easement where it hits town land and Gifford Street. So the town has actually participated in making sure that this looping takes place. And while there are no guarantees, they seem to be quite satisfied that with this looping, they will achieve the pressure they expect.
So were there any discussions with the fire department? Because I can understand the issues with occupancy and proper pressure, but there's also issues that when you're doing a development like this in a project and hopefully everything goes fine, but if a fire or an issue broke out, you do back up to that, the power line area, which leads to every other house on the strip. You've got two very close abutters, and then you have the school directly across. So it seemed that when they would, that the test on the hydrants not having enough pressure mean that there could be a fire suppression concern if there was an issue on the site during construction. You know, when this project was first applying, I was actually thinking more of that issue, you know, versus just the pressure on the interior for occupants.
Yeah, I did not have any impression from the fire department that they had a concern about construction going forward, I think. And they did mention that, you know, again, I don't get into the numeric issues of the exact water pressure. They did indicate that there was, and the testing showed that there was a certain amount of water pressure. I think the town just realized that it could be better than that, but there was no representation made by fire that they had a concern about any ability to fight fires in that area.
I know we don't generally allow public comment, but this is pertinent to our conversation. Nick Maroni is in the webinar chat stating that they received the license today. It needs to be signed and notarized and countersigned. We can proceed with the work. It's a two-day job. So with that, with that information.
I have one other question, and somebody might be able to answer, which is, why wasn't the town there when the work was done?
So apparently there was some error in that the town requires being present during these testings, and apparently there was not notification provided to them to be for that.
And is there any way that that we're, we can be assured of that in the future, that that takes place in the process?
Well, I think, you know, people can continue to provide the information that it's important to do things in, in proper order and that inspections properly take place the way they're supposed to.
My recollection of, and I didn't vote on this, this project, but I was there for the discussion when the supervisor, the town's water supervisor was there, Steve Rafferty. And it was pretty clear as to what he was looking for on this particular project. I just guess I again am concerned that there are procedures that are laid out and we're finding people do not follow the procedures. And then it sounds to me, quite frankly, like the town is bending over backwards to say that they will ensure that they pay a portion of, of it of the cost to make sure that this happens. And that's just a comment.
Thank you, Mary. And I agree with you. And I think this is a, you know, as issues come up, it is a learning curve, a learning process with the board.
You know, Mr. Chairman, it is a learning.
I'll hold the rest of my comments for, for board discussion. How's that?
I guess, I guess.
If someone could remind me later if I forget.
It isn't, that's good, that's good. It is, it is a learning process, but in, you know, in many of these developments, we're not dealing with inexperienced developers. You know, we're, we're usually dealing with somebody that does have some kind of a history. They do have a construction background. In most cases, they have done other projects or similar projects. You know, I've been involved in different building things over the years, but, you know, I'm not going to say I'm a professional on building, but even I understand that when you do water lines or hydrants, that the town needs to be on the inspection. So there may have been something in the paperwork, there may have been a misunderstanding, but it is hard for me to believe that even the person running the water test, who would be a professional, would not be aware that somebody from the town would be required to be actually be at the inspection.
I agree with you, Bob. And to your point, and I think the board's aware of this, but the public might not be. A 40B project, when it's submitted to the state, it actually requires that the applicant and the applicant's team have experience specifically with 40B projects in the past. It's, it's part of, it's part of the resume that they provide in order to get their approvals. Any other questions regarding the bond? From anyone?
No, I mean, I guess the only question I had is, Mr. Marioni has, has this license. We're still going to ask him to put up the bond for now.
Of course.
Yeah.
And if the, and if the fully executed agreement could be provided to the ZBA, I'd be happy to get that as well.
Yes, I can certainly provide you a copy once it's executed.
Thank you.
I mean, to me, the bond is a, is a good solution to this, and probably we should have asked for it at the outset, frankly. Because there was some resistance even back in the hearings, as I recall, for putting this in. I can understand their concern about getting permission from a third party to do it.
All right. All right. So just so everyone's on the same page, and virtually I do have to announce it, Scott has recused from this, Ed has recused. So the voting members on this are Bob, myself, Ken, James, and Mary.
So, so could we have a discussion on substantial versus insubstantial?
Sure.
So we just get some opinions from different members because I completely understand, like you said, Ken, the idea with the bond, and it probably is something that we should have done, and it, and it may be a solution. I'm still stuck in the safety issue. There was a concern with the pressure in those hydrants. And there's a lot of stuff that goes on in construction sites. And frequently, there can be minor accidents or accidents, so you could have a fire that breaks out. We don't have anything from submitted to show any kind of discussion from the fire department. If the fire department was involved in any of these hearings, the discussions, they haven't submitted anything. And my main concern is, I remember when we were doing the project, that even the abutters had concerns, could anything happen and affect their property? So as, as much as if it wasn't affecting the hydrants, I wouldn't have as much of a concern that it is an insubstantial change, but because it's affecting hydrants, I just think that's a safety issue that can encompass the surrounding area, the surrounding homes, and again, there's a school in very close proximity. So.
But I, I think I can help you with that in that there, first of all, there, there is water pressure, okay? The fire department has been included in, I can't begin to tell you how many emails went back and forth to try to resolve this issue to make sure that everybody was comfortable with the particular solution. And there, there was a level of comfort expressed that this bond would resolve the outstanding issue. And I guess as far as the substantial versus insubstantial, if you look back at the original decision, you required that the water main be brought to the easement. That piece has been done. So in that aspect, the decision has been complied with. You then requested that the main be looped through the EverSource easement if that could take place. Everybody has essentially worked together to ensure that that piece will take place as well. So I would say that this is, you know, the looping of the water main will be a benefit to both the development and the town. And that there are, you know, as far as the school goes, you would not use the water, the hydrant that is on Beach Plum Path.
No, I'm not, I'm not concerned with the hydrant for the school. And I'll tell you what I'm concerned with. If a fire does break out in that site, are we guaranteeing the abutters that there is enough pressure in those hydrants to put that out? Because if we can't do that, a bond isn't going to help anything. And what I meant by the school is the, that property where the easement starts is all dry brush area. So right now, we're in a situation that we're not in most years. We have been in drought conditions for the entire summer. So everything's pretty much a tinderbox right now. If a fire ever spread to that EverSource area, it would go straight across towards the school, but it would also go all the way up both sides of Locust Field and spread out. So if you can guarantee that, I don't have as much of an issue, but, but pressure in a hydrant versus pressure to push water through the hoses to where they need it is different. And that's the reason I asked if we had anything submitted directly from the fire department, because the fire department said, we have enough pressure in the, in the hydrants that exists that we can handle any instance if that happens out there. But it seems the fire department may have not chimed in, but they might not have even been brought into that kind of a discussion because it was a different issue you were dealing with. So for that reason, I just think it's substantial.
No, I mean, this has been, you know, very collaborative. We have included the fire department. We have included the DPW. We have included the water superintendent. The fire department was by and large willing to look at what the water department slash DPW was saying as far as what provisions there would be, and they were all essentially unanimously satisfied that this bond would achieve the resolution. That being said, you know, everybody has seen fires on the news. There are no guarantees about what anybody can do in anyone's situation. But I think for this particular development, I think this is a good option and opportunity to get that water main looped.
So, so in my opinion, I think the bond is a good opportunity to get the water main looped. But I'm not willing to take the risk on the safety end without that kind of an input. So for that case, I would say it's.
Which, which, which input are you looking for?
I want something for the fire department that says there's enough pressure in all those hydrants that they can handle fires that are coming out if anything happened on that site.
Right. So there's one single hydrant that is on Beach Plum Path at the easement. But beyond that, the fire department has capabilities and capacities to put out fires for any of the myriad subdivisions or construction projects that the town has had.
Chairman, you know, I keep seeing these notes coming across the chat. Maybe you could comment on them.
And I don't want to make too much of a habit of it, but let's see what.
Oh, it's relevant because if, if the work is going to be done before any additional work, if the work is going to be completed on the water main looping prior to any further construction on the site, that resolves the issue. On the other hand, I think we still need to demand the bond until completion, or at least the signing of the bond. Yeah, I think we still need to demand it.
Right.
You know, it's going to start tomorrow.
Right. So Nick says, read, read condition six, says we do the tests and provide results to the town. We'll install the water and no bond is required as work would be completed or a complete bond is to secure the performance. We will not be posting the bond. We will be doing the work. Well, the whole point of a bond is to ensure performance, right?
Yes, absolutely. But I guess what I'm driving at is, you know, it, it sounds to me like they're agreeing that the work will be done prior to further construction on the site, which I think would keep Bob happy.
Well, they're also saying that they will not post the bond.
I didn't say I agreed with that part of it.
I also thought they said that they would do, do that before they go for, for occupancy permits, which I thought they were going to go ahead with construction.
Right. So the, the original permits were tied to the water main being put into the easement. That part has been done. But it appears from the chat as though they feel that they're going to be able to just put this water main looping in pretty, in pretty quick order, and that perhaps they're no longer in need of the bond. I think the bond was suggested to ensure that construction could continue while they were awaiting EverSource approval, but apparently they now have the EverSource approval. So perhaps what they're saying here is that they no longer need the bond.
Yeah, I mean, I'm wondering if we could make, do, do something where we give them like a one week timeframe to complete the work or whatever is the appropriate length of time. He says it's two days of work. And if it's not done within that. And if it's not done within that period, then the bond shall be posted.
So to the administrator, so since we have this issue now with COVID with the 20 day time period. Could we continue this on the water main? To let's say a two week date. To read, to rediscuss it and that way if they have the water in by that time, they can just withdraw their request. He, they're saying that they'll have it done in a couple of days.
I mean, the other thing you could do would be if they apparently don't need, they don't intend to post the bond and that they don't need it. The other possibility would be that you could vote it and that if it's not needed, it wouldn't be executed.
Right. I think, I think it's good to have the bond there because I think frankly, that seems to be catalyzing action.
I think it's excellent to have the bond, absolutely.
I think it's good to have the bond too, but you just had a statement by the representative developer that just said, we're not going to do the bond.
Right, well, you know, we could say the bond shall be posted within a week unless the work is completed prior to that time. Something like that.
I suppose I'm a little confused because I thought they were coming in for an insubstantial change. And that we should be talking about what that change is, and I'm not so sure at this point in time, I know what that is that they're asking for.
The insubstantial change was the addition of the, of the bond to the set of conditions, as I understand it, is that correct, Noreen?
Right.
The conditions already required the loop.
But the, but the condition required the looping prior to construction.
No, the condition required the installation of the, of the main to the easement. The looping, the looping was, if you will, the frosting on the cake. That was the desired outcome for the town and for the development was that the water main be looped. To ensure best water quality and best water.
And wasn't the pressure related to the, the construction permits?
No.
Oh, can we just, I mean, do we, Noreen, is the appropriate thing, this is administrative approval. But do you need some kind of a motion from us or?
So my suggestion, and, and again, this was just to ensure that the construction could continue. Would be to vote the bond and certainly if the developer finds that they can put the water main in. And that they don't need to post the bond, then there won't be any bond posted.
Right. Would, would you be okay with saying that we, you know, we give them until, I don't know. What is this, the fifteenth?
I mean, basically you.
A twenty-third to get it done or something like that prior to, prior to posting the bond, that's next Friday.
Yeah, I don't know how quickly they're going to be able to get that piece done. I guess what you could do is if you're willing, you can authorize the bond and that. The developer will come back to the town if they find that there's a delay in their being able to put the water main in. They would then come to the town and say, okay, the bond is approved, so we would like to post the bond. For the water main, if they find that they can't install it immediately.
Right. I'd like to make a date, like, let's say the twenty-third. Because Mr. Mirione is suggesting it's two days of work and they have the permit and they can go forward.
So I'm a little confused, is this, are we voting on what's dated October sixth, twenty twenty? Request for insubstantial?
We're, we're voting on, on just the, just the bond agreement, Mary.
Is that condition thirty-eight be changed?
I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear you.
Is this what's on this piece of paper that I received that is dated October sixth, twenty twenty? And it, it's requesting a change to condition thirty-eight?
No, that's separate.
No, so, so the bond. In an email. Sent out our. Right, it was, it was an attachment to an email sent October fifth by Noreen to the board members. And it's a PDF, the performance, performance born, performance bond agreement. So if I wasn't clear, my apologies, we're, we're only on number two of the open meeting.
So they're, they're asking for an insubstantial change. To. Prepare a bond agreement?
In exchange for building permits. And I think that's the key, this is, the, the, this whole idea of the bond is in exchange for building permits. And that's where I get back to it again, I, I, I haven't, I just have an issue with the pressure. And I know that we're doing these substantial, but substantial change, so I think the only, I think the first thing we have to do. Is just go across all the members and do a vote, is this substantial or insubstantial? If it's insubstantial, then there's a vote on the bond. If it's substantial, then this would have to go to a public hearing, which again, they could discuss. The idea of a bond if they still needed anything.
So I guess what I would only say to you is that this bond agreement is to affect the looping of main. It's not a specific change to the decision.
So why is the applicant saying this is in exchange for building permits?
So there was a communication between our town council and council for the developer. On the specific language of the bond so that the town would have protections and insurance. That the water main would be looped and the same for the developer. So the resulting language in the bond covers both the town and the developer. And both parties, both legal parties have agreed that the language within the bond. Will work for both parties.
So my question is, what is the issue with the water main? That according to the developer is stopping the building permits?
Right, so initially, there was not an understanding about when they would be able to get. The approval from ever source, so the bond was proposed as a resolution. So the developer could continue with construction while the approval from ever source was underway. It appears from the chat that ever source has now given approval. And that they perhaps have a few steps that they need to follow in order to do the looping. So this is new information to us that they have this approval. But the, like I said, the bond was prepared just in order to. Ensure that everybody was able to move forward with the work.
And we haven't seen anything from ever source, so we actually don't know what the paperwork is regarding whatever the approval is.
Right. The bond is just to protect the town so that the water main is looped.
So if the, if the, if, if what's in, if the, the lines in the ground now to the hydrants. Even though they don't meet water pressure. Is that currently holding the building permits up? Because it just seems they're focusing on, they need this in order to get their building permits. And I know there's been other issues over time with building permits, so.
Now, it, it would not be fair for me to represent what the pressure reports showed. Because I don't have background in that area, I did, as I say, have multiple contacts with the water superintendent. To, and with the DPW and with the fire department to ensure that everything, safety protocol wise. And for the town, for the pressure, for the main, was all seen to and all tied up through this bond.
So I guess my only question is, because they keep bringing up this exchange for building permits.
Right.
Is, is the way that it currently exists, the lines that are in, whatever the pressure is. Is that now directly correlating with holding up any construction? Because they, they, they keep saying that this is specifically for the building permits. They're not saying for occupancy, they're saying for the actual permits for construction. So my guess is if that's what they're saying, there's something in the decision that is tying this line in to the actual building permits.
Right, so there, there were two somewhat conflicting lines in the conditions. Relating to the installation of the water main and tying that to building permits. And so this bond would help clarify. How this water main was going to be managed so that the building permits can be issued. So I guess what I would say to you is, you know, the, the people within the town that have the knowledge and understanding.
Just, just for a point of order, just for a second, I, I, I think we might have lost Mary's connection.
Looks like we did, oh, and she's either Adrian or if you could re-elevate her, please, she got bounced out somehow.
I'd, I'd like to move this along, I, I, you know, there's quite a bit of other business, and I'm just wondering if a motion that says. No further building permits shall be, or shall be issued until a bond is, until the water. Line is installed or the bond is posted by a date of the twenty-third of. So that gives them. You know, I'm trying to make it so that they don't have to pony up all that money. You know, if what they're going to do is use the money to put in the water main instead.
So I guess procedurally, should we just vote first substantial or insubstantial to get that out of the way? Because it seemed like through town council, that's what we have to vote on first, is it substantial or insubstantial? And then whatever that results are, then you go up onto the bonding.
That's, that's my understanding, Bob, Noreen, is that correct?
That was not a point that we specifically discussed. I think the, again, the intent, because the board had required that the main be installed to the easement. And that that has been done, that that's essentially compliance with that piece. And that the bond is. I mean, I guess if you, if you feel more comfortable discussing it as, you know, or voting it as substantial or insubstantial.
I'm only asking because that's what the actual request is, it's a request for an insubstantial change, so we'd have to first vote on the request. And then whatever that outcome is going forward.
It could be combined into a single motion, deemed an insubstantial change and that these are the. Circumstances under which we, you know, are willing to approve it.
So that's the best way to do it, though.
All right. Would, would anyone like to make a motion?
Well, so, so let's.
Or discuss what, what the, what the motion may be, Ken, go ahead.
Give it a try, I, I'd like to say that we, we, we consider it an insubstantial change. Because the conditions already to, to, to do the. Looping of the water main, we're already in the decision and it was, and so this is merely. An attempt to ensure that it gets done by posting a bond, doesn't require a new hearing. And that we, we grant the, the. Applicant until the twenty-third of October to complete the work. After which a bond must be posted and no, no building permits will be issued unless either the work is completed or the bond is posted. How about that?
Well said, Ken. So is, is that an official motion?
Yes, please.
All right, so the voting members on this are myself, Bob, Ken, James, and Mary.
We need a second, though.
Yes, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, James, so seconded by James, roll call vote, Bob.
All right, so I, I, I'm a nay only because I, I do think it's a substantial change that is affecting a safety item tied to building permits. And I think we need a formal hearing.
All right, Ken?
I'm a yay or a yes, I don't know.
Yeah, if we could stick to yes or no, it's, it's tough to tell on the internet what's, what's what. James?
I vote yes.
Mary?
Mary Berry, no.
And TJ Hurry, yes, so it's three to two and under the comprehensive permit rules. I believe that carries with a simple majority, Noreen, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Very good, okay, so the motion passes, which Ken eloquently said, thank you, Ken. All right, up next, and sorry for the confusion, if I got anyone confused about what items we wronged. Onto item number three, board administrative approval request for insubstantial change. Locus Field LLC Beach Plum Path located at four thirty Locus Field Road six dash nineteen. Modifications to previously approved plans and Mary, this would be what you were referring to a moment ago. And I'm sorry for any confusion between the bond and these insubstantial changes. And once again, Scott and Ed have recused themselves and the voting members on this item are myself. Bob, Ken, James, and Mary. Noreen, I don't know if you want to start us off with conversation here about this request?
I don't have the list in front of me, I apologize for that.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
That's okay. Thank you, okay, so. All right, so is this the one for the screen porch or three season room over the deck? Is that the one that you're looking at?
It's a Locus Field.
Okay, so they have a, a number of requests, one of which is they are asking permission. In lieu of the rear deck, which. They would like to be able to put in a screened porch or three season room. I don't know if you want me to go through them each separately or do you want to talk about them together?
Maybe list them all?
Yeah, maybe just list them all, just so we understand, get it on the record.
Okay, so, so one is the change from the deck, the rear deck to be a screen porch or a three season room. The next is that they are asking to put seven hundred and fourteen square feet as a room. Over the garage to be used as a bonus room. They have specifically requested this for three of the market rate units and one of the affordable units. They are asking permission to be able to finish the basement in part or in full. And the part of the language here that's not clear is it says, and to make floor plan layout changes. So long as they are not adding windows or adding bedrooms. So that to me means that they're asking to be able to, uh, potentially have a, you know, basement be all living area and to make floor plan changes throughout the house. I presume that would mean moving rooms around and, you know, possibly the bonus room could become a bedroom. Um, at which point in time, the, one of the bedrooms would have to be converted, I guess, to something else because they are approved only as three bedroom units.
And in addition to those physical changes, Noreen, there was also a, uh, request to amend the language of condition 38 prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall enter into monitoring agreement to be approved by town council.
Right. And, and town council has pointed out that the town is actually not a party to that. And so they are, um, agreeable to the language being amended to just say that a copy of that will be provided to the town.
All right. And, uh, we're really not accustomed to receiving this many requests, uh, as part of an insubstantial change. Would you recommend that we go item by item and vote whether each one is substantial or insubstantial? Or vote as a whole? Because I can, I can see how number two, the certificate occupancy, I can, that's a little different than the other ones. So.
And we maybe.
I guess.
Absolutely have discussion, but I ju- I just wanted a little.
I mean, I think, I think, I think for the monitoring agreement portion, I think that there's really not a problem with correcting the language here. I think probably what happened is in following the pattern of other 40Bs, which had always said to be approved by town council. And somehow when it was sent to them, they must've missed that, that it became responsible there. And they have essentially opted out. So it would be their preference that that language be corrected. So I think, you know, that could be something that you may want to vote separately. And that perhaps the changes to add square footage of living area to the house, maybe some, something that you would, um, look at as a group perhaps.
Thank you, Noreen. And I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Ken. Were, were you gonna?
Well, I was just gonna suggest we quickly see what people, you know, one by one, what, what people thought. Uh, not discuss just, you know, yes, it's substantial. No, it's not.
Sure. Uh, you want to get us started then, Ken?
So yeah, I would agree that the, the, the monitoring agreement is not a substantial change. I think any of these other changes that increase, um, a bulk and, and living area with possible exception of, of changing around, you know, the, the basement. Uh, you might be able to convince me that's not a major change, but, uh, you know, making, uh, decks, three season rooms. I think that's a substantial change. That changes the entire, uh, appearance of the, of the, uh, and it's already dense, right? So now you're adding a lot of bulk to these things. Um, uh, changing, changing the models also making, you know, nearly 40% more living area in each of those. Uh, just seems to me to be, uh, a fairly substantial change to what they're asking for.
Thank you, Ken. And I, and I tend to agree with you both on both your points regarding the, um, condition 38, uh, striking the town council language. I, I'm leaning toward that's insubstantial, but, uh, the, the request to, especially to change a screen porch or three season room, I mean, uh, you know, with, with 40Bs, you generally deal with, with density. We're well aware of that and, uh, the, uh, rear setbacks, you know, I'd, I'd argue that a, a deck is a rather passive use of the property and uh, dealing with these changes to three season rooms and the other requests, uh, I, I think those percentages in square footage amounts, I, I think that goes above and beyond insubstantial. Uh, let's see, who's next on the Brady Bunch squares? James? What do you think?
Uh, I would agree with you and Ken. I think that the addition of a three season room versus a deck is clearly a substantial change. Uh, addition of a bonus room is a substantial change. Uh, I would think that finishing off a basement, I, I can be sold on that too, but depending on, I think that there would need to be a hearing, uh, to put some restrictions that it's either not going to be bedroom space or if it is bedroom space, that, uh, one of the other bedrooms be somehow eliminated. So I think that would be substantial or require a hearing. As for the monitoring agreement, I don't consider that substantial.
All right. Uh, Mary?
So the monitoring agreement to me is, is insubstantial. The rest of it is substantial and I view it as a whole.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, Bob?
Yeah. So I'm in agreement also. Um, the modern agreement I find is insubstantial. Uh, one, two, and three, I do find are substantial. Um, I normally would be on board with a finished basement. My concern there is where it mentions layout changes. And once you do layout change, it affects the other rooms in the house. Um, bonus room, uh, can be a lot. Uh, my only other concern here where they're asking for these changes now, and it may not be related or not, but uh, when I went to the site, there was a sign there that said that pretty much, I think they're all purchased, but two at the time the sign was up. Um, have they marketed the current units to include these items? And is that why they're asking for them now? Does the administrator know that at all or?
So I have been contacted by individuals that represent that they have an arrangement to purchase. And they were inquiring, um, whether these options that they were essentially agreeing to or, or requesting would be allowed. So it, it does appear that they, they have been marketed to have these additions.
Um, I, I'd also just comment that on one, two, and three, that again, I think are substantial. That can also cause an inequity in the ratio when you're looking at the affordable units versus the market rate. You know, the look of the unit, um, there's a suggestion here that, you know, the bonus room could be on three markets, but you only want affordable. So then you'd really need to put them, you'd really need to include both affordables on any additions that you add on any of the market rates. So I think the inequity is another reason they would be a substantial change.
Good point, Bob. All right. And I think that's, that's the five of us, right? Okay. Sorry, between the Brady Bunch squares and the recuses, I just had to make sure that everyone.
And I, I, I would just add one other thing, which is, which is that they, uh, you know, the original approved agreement was one that they felt they could do economically and make money. And I'm not sure why these changes are necessary, especially if Bob's right that they've sold most of them.
That's what the sign, I mean, that's what the sign said. I mean, I guess the other thing that, that gets involved is if, if this eventually does get approved and you're adding these other items to the homes, I would assume the homes would be worth more in value. Um, and that would affect again, uh, performance statements. You know, I don't know what kind of effect it would have, but it would have effect on their performance statements and their, um, you know, their income from the, from the project.
All right. So the, the board's pretty much in agreement here regarding the, uh, the separate requests. Uh, Noreen, would you suggest that it'd be appropriate to provide findings? Uh, that if we vote so that some findings are substantial?
Yes. So that does make best sense. I think for anything that you've decided is insubstantial, I don't think there's any findings necessary there. But I think if you are deciding that something is substantial and that you would want it to come back for the board as a regular hearing, those items should have findings.
Very good. All right.
There's some good findings here. Do you, do you read some of the highlights off if you want?
Sure. Why don't, why don't you go ahead, Ken? Just so we have that on the record with, uh, Zoom and all.
So, uh, the request to create 144 square feet of, uh, screened in porch or three season room over the back deck, uh, would add 7.4% of living area. That's finding. Dwellings are now approximately 21 feet from their rear lot lines and this would change that to 11 feet. Will add to the cost of the home. Moves away from all dwellings looking alike, which is important, uh, criteria for, uh, you know, 40B developments. So there's nothing distinguishing, uh, market rates from non-market rate units. Then regarding the, the request to change three of the units, uh, units 10, 12, and 19, and one affordable to, to a, a model that adds uh, 714, uh, square foot bonus room over the garage. That would increase the living area to, of each house to 1,949 square feet, uh, which would be a 37, nearly 37% increase to the, uh, living area. That's certainly not insubstantial. Also moves away from consistent dwellings, adds cost to the home. It's not, uh, another finding I would say is it's not clear, uh, how, uh, we ensure that that does not result in an additional bedroom, uh, being added to those homes.
Ken, did you mention an increase in profit? Which would affect the original application?
I, I didn't mention that. I mean, I'm not opposed to the developer making money. Uh, I would only point out that if they're make, they initially agreed that this was economic, they could make enough money to make this a worthwhile project as it was originally proposed and approved. So I don't feel that, uh, there's an argument that they can make that it's uneconomic unless they do this.
I guess, I guess you, I guess you could use part of that, uh, what Mary said that, um, the profit could be, um, increased beyond the allowed percentage under 40B regulations. Cause we don't know.
Well, there you go.
Right. And we just.
My point.
Thank you, Mary. And we just.
Okay. That's a good.
Terrifying that.
That's a.
Since the, since the administrator has been contacted, um, and you can let us know, Noreen or not, um, can we make a finding that the board office has been contacted by, uh, I guess potential purchasers that seem to be relying that they were promised these changes?
Well, I, I can't necessarily use the word promised. Um, it did appear that the units were marketed as, um, the board approved as being essentially the base house and that there could be these additional add-ons. And now traditionally within 40Bs, you know, the interior of a house for a market house, you know, have certain upgrades or could have certain upgrades or a different quality of finish or whatever else it is. But that essentially the exteriors of exterior of the houses, the intent is that they are indistinguishable, the affordables from the market rates.
I, I guess my concern is if, you know, this project was, was approved a while back and they would have to do the, you know, marketing in advance. And I am a little concerned if they were marketing these as base units in offering these additions when that's not what they were allowed to do. So I don't know how you would put it. I just think that's important to have in the record somewhere that, you know, someone had, you've at least been contacted that, that these ideas were offered. Now, we don't know what their details are in the sales and I don't care to know that, but if you, if they were offered items that weren't allowed in our original permit, that seems to be a violation of our original permit.
Well, I think of an interesting finding, Bob, which goes to the issue of whether the, is it was approved. It was marketed and apparently they've sold most of the models, most of the units, right? That's a finding.
So that's, that's good.
We don't know, we don't know the details of, you know, we, we frankly don't know what, what they've been promised or not promised.
So that's good. So maybe, maybe make that finding that they, they've sold most of the units.
Right. Already. So I think we could just assume that, uh, in accordance with the original decision, that people agreed to buy those homes as they were approved.
It's perfect. That's great.
Um, when I come to the basement, I'm, I'm a little, you know, that is a change, interior change that does not affect the external appearance. And I'm, I'm a little personally less concerned about what goes on in the basement. But I do agree that it's so vague in the request in terms of making layout, floor plan changes, uh, that we need more specificity before we could, uh.
I mean, you could say that the layout changes seem to be applied, that they would affect the layouts of the, um, of the above ground spaces of the homes, which could, I mean, all likelihood affect bedroom layout. I mean, you know, but bonus rooms alone, you know, because they're at a max on their bedroom count now. Uh, like you said, Noreen, all of a sudden they relabel a bonus room as a bedroom. And they relabel one of the other rooms as something else. But in our case, it would have to meet other definitions or not be a bedroom. So we would have to have to require, you know, open case openings or something else under the plan. So my concern with that is it's the layout change that I have the concern with versus finishing off a family.
I think we, we would say something like, we need a hearing to discuss the.
Right.
The layout changes.
Exactly. I mean, the point is we've, we've basically agreed, except for one of them, that they're basically substantial. The request is substantial. So it means it goes to a hearing and that's where we can have all these discussions.
Right. So that is the finding. The finding is that.
Absolutely. I don't think that we need to come up with all the findings in this.
Well, the findings are to justify why we, why we didn't consider it not to be a insubstantial change.
I know, but we don't have to go on and on. I think we have enough meat on the bone to make it happen.
That's fine.
All right. So Mary, to your point, I, I think we do have enough, uh, findings to back up our decision here. And if there's no more board discussion, we can have a motion.
Motion that it's a substantial change with the findings stated.
For items one, two, and three.
And are we, are we including, uh, well, I suppose you're, are we voting substantial? And then we're voting separately, the certificate occupancy issue as insubstantial?
You mean the monitoring?
I'm, I'm sorry. Yes.
Yes.
It's part of the motion though, right? We're just doing.
That the, the change in, change in the monitoring agent agreement, uh, with respect to approval by the town, I guess that's, um, is considered insubstantial. And, uh, the changes to the dimensions and structural nature of the buildings is substantial.
Very good. All right. So is there a second?
So I'll second.
All right. So the motion was made by Ken, seconded by Bob. Uh, roll call vote. Ken?
And form an eye.
James?
James Morris, eye.
Mary?
Mary Berry, eye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, eye.
And TJ Hurry, eye. So the motion passes unanimously. All right. We have another one. Board Administrative Approval Request for Insubstantial Change Regarding Helms Circle LLC Little Pond Village at Falmouth Heights. This was application 90-17 modification to previously approved plans. Some of us have been on the board long enough to actually remember this project. And welcome back, Ed. Welcome back, Scott. I assume any, any, any recusals at all from anyone on this? All right. Seeing none, the voting members on this will be the regular voting numbers, but as always, everyone can chime in with their thoughts about the request. All right. So Noreen, I don't know if you wanted to start off, Noreen or Bob?
No, I just have a question, TJ. So on the, on all these administrative changes, I thought it was all of the, all the members have to vote on them. This is just the voting members? Because it was a board request versus a decision request.
Oh.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think, I think you can just have the five members vote.
Okay.
So I guess if you want a brief overview, the actual permit for Helms Circle preceded me, so I had to do some reading. You have very voluminous files here relating to that. What I found was that within the decision, it appeared that there was negotiation where the board did not want the originally proposed 10 detached garages that would be only for market rate units. And it appeared that the developer, as part of that negotiation of removing the garages, was looking for assurance from the board that you would grant the 28 lots. So the decision did reflect that the garages would be removed and that 28 lots, building lots were granted. That being said, the change that's back before the board is that the housing, the three housing designs that were originally proposed have undergone some changes. And now the developer is asking to have, instead of a detached garage, they want to have an attached garage that would be essentially within the approximate same footprint that you had approved for the house. So they're, they're asking that there be 22 of these dwellings that would have the single car garage and that the additional six lots be allowed to have a shed.
Thank you, Noreen. Just to start off the conversation, I mean, I, I do remember that I do remember that the issue of the garages, that that was a considerable issue that we raised. And like Noreen said, I appreciated her time here, but that was a negotiation that the board had with the applicant in order for them to keep the amount of lots that they requested to take the garages off the table. And Ken, I might remember that you specifically pushed for that, unless I'm mistaken.
I mean, you probably remember better than me. But if I did, good for me. Again, it's a substantial change and I certainly, you know, it's so vague right now. I, I don't see a layout plan or anything like that. I certainly couldn't approve this administratively without reopening some kind of a hearing.
I agree, Ken. I definitely agree. I just think there's just some issues that I think the board and the town would be better served having a public hearing on this to explore rather than an administrative approval and substantial change. Ed, how do you feel?
Have the lawsuits been settled? Have the lawsuits been settled?
Yes.
Presumably.
No, it was.
Bob, how do you feel?
Yeah, so I, I feel the same way. It's definitely substantial and I, I do remember this very specifically. And yes, Bravo, Ken, you, you were on the head on the garages. I'd also like to mention, it was pretty much the only negotiation item that we were able to obtain on the whole project. That project was very heavily attended by residents, and I know there were a lot of questions in general. And the other thing is they did, I remember when they did come back, because they came to the mediation on the change in the last two or three lots at the pond, which moved closer. In doing this may affect that also. And it also seems that they're changing. I know, one of the things we kind of liked is there was a mix between ranches and I think it was capes at the time. And it seems to appear that at this point, they're getting rid of all the ranches and just going with a different design.
So they, they are maintaining a ranch. Their second option was a salt box. And what in lieu of the salt box, they've gone with a cape and I believe a, what they're calling a modified cape. So they are still offering three different options, or they're proposing three different options. But no longer the salt box.
And the main thing, as Noreen said, it, it, you know, it did go around that the whole idea of the garages was because they agreed, we agreed to give them the additional lots in lieu of the garages. If we, if we had left the garages on those units, we would not have agreed to the additional lots.
Right. And to the applicant's credit, I remember they did propose those several different building types, and I believe the board, the board was receptive to that. And of course, it would scatter the affordable units throughout the property. And even though they offered different kinds of floor plans, you, you couldn't tell which one was which. Everyone keeps switching around. Scott, how do you feel?
So if they offer three different architectural types, the one that they're asking for tonight isn't of those three either, is it? The one with the garage in, inside one of them. So I would deem this a substantial request. I agree with everyone.
All right. Who else do I need? Mary? Oh, you're muted, Mary. Sorry.
I thought you just wanted voting members.
Yeah, but everyone can always chime in, just like, just like anything. It, it might be the only voting numbers or the only ones voting, but.
I read through this very extensively. I read the entire decision, all the paperwork on it. It's substantial.
James, how do you feel? Not sure about James. All right. So we're, I think we're in agreement that it would be substantial, and I think. Oh, there you are, James.
I agree it's substantial. Sorry, I had someone knocking at my office door.
No worries.
It's not even Halloween.
I agree it's substantial too.
There you go. And okay, thank you. And I think we can support a motion with with some findings about the inequities presented in the project now regarding the garages and the type of house that's now proposed. Anything else?
I'd only point out that we probably should cite in our, in both of these recommendations for substantial change, 760 CMR 56.07.
Right, because that is the, that is the state code that it falls under for the 40Bs. Anyone out there? I know we know that, but anyone out there who doesn't? All right.
So TJ, can you, can you go over those main findings again?
All right. So the inequities of the market rates having detached garages and no affordable units having garages.
Oh, so I, I should correct you there. Sorry.
Sure. Go ahead.
22 of the 28 units are proposed to have these single car garages as part of the houses. Six of the seven affordable units would be recipients of those garages. So don't think that you particularly have an inequity situation here. They're essentially giving all but one of the affordable houses a, a single car garage. I think perhaps maybe what the greater concern for the board here is the specific negotiation that you had that was pretty clearly captured within your decision that you had had these negotiations. Now, it may be that because the garages were formerly detached, that that was a bigger issue for you. But I think where you specifically asked them to remove the garages and they agreed to do so in, you know, as part of getting the 28 lots, I think it's that change for you perhaps.
Thank you for the correction, Noreen.
Yeah, and they're completely changing the, the look, exterior appearance of these buildings by catching garages, changing the size of the buildings, et cetera, et cetera. And maybe it's fine. I don't know. But I haven't seen any elevations, any, any site plan or anything. So it's not insubstantial enough not to require a, a hearing to look at it.
The, the sheds proposed too, while we're talking about things like law coverage too, right? All right. Anything else? Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion then?
So then I'll make a motion that this is a substantial change and we'll cite the findings as discussed.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second it.
By Ed. Roll call vote. Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
And TJ Hari, aye. So the motion passes unanimously. We are deeming those changes substantial for the findings that we listed. All right. How would everyone feel about a, about a five minute break before we tackle the rest of the agenda?
Excellent idea.
Excellent idea, Harry. I have just one question. Yeah. I have one question before, this one, Noreen, do we have full size site drawings of this?
Or which it? For Helms?
For the new, whatever, Helms, yes.
So.
It is a reduced copy.
Yeah. I, I do have a site plan that I did have printed out on full size paper. I have a great difficulty real, reading those reduces. So now that town hall is open, people are welcome to come in and look at that if you'd like.
Thank you, Noreen. All right. We will take a quick five minute break before we take up the rest of our agenda. Or in the board wraps up our business at 9:30. How about a preemptive vote to continue past 9:30 to a given time? Does anyone want to make that motion? I don't think we can get things done in five minutes.
I'll make the motion to go to 10 seconds.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Motion to continue the board's business to 10 o'clock, made by Scott, seconded by Ken. Roll call vote and we'll get it from everyone. Mary, you're first on the Brady Bunch squares.
Mary Berry, aye.
Thank you, Mary. James?
Grudgingly, aye.
Scott?
Bob Zelinski, aye.
Ken?
Chairs, aye. Ken Forman.
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Thank you, Ed. And TJ Hari, aye. James, I don't, I don't know if anyone's ever basically recused or perhaps voted present for a continuation of the time. I don't know. That's never been done. All right. So up next we have reviewing the draft decision with possible vote on application 78-19 Buzzards Bay Development LLC 40 Shore Street in Falmouth. So Noreen's taken the time to incorporate all the changes that we suggested at last meeting. Anything else, Noreen?
I do not have anything further to add.
All right. Thank you, Noreen.
Thank you.
So Mr. Chairman, I guess I would suggest that since we've all got a copy of the draft and we've pretty much gone over all the findings, that maybe we just skip to the conditions to vote each one.
You might want to just vote the findings. Do you want to just vote them as a unit? And then vote the conditions?
Sure. I, I think that's the best way of doing it. And I should mention, the voting members on this are myself, Bob, Ed, and Mary. So does anyone, if there's no changes to the findings, I think I'm all set with them. Does anyone want to make a motion as far as the findings go as a whole?
So I'd make a motion to accept the findings as a whole as presented in the latest draft decision.
And that includes the language that Bob circulated or I circulated today.
Correct.
Yes. All right. So that was a motion by Bob, seconded by Ed. Roll call vote. Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
Okay. Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
And TJ Hari, aye. The findings pass unanimously as drafted and as modified by Bob. All right. Moving on to the conditions, and it's been the board practice to take each one, one by one to vote.
So where condition one deals mainly with all of the plans, and Noreen has concisely listed all the plans, I would suggest we vote condition one as presented.
All right. Is there a second?
Second it.
All right. Seconded by Ed. Roll call vote. Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
And TJ Hari, aye. So condition one passes unanimously. Sorry, go ahead, Bob.
Well, I guess what I'll do is I'll read the following conditions and then we can vote after each one.
Sure.
So this is related to prior to site work, and this is condition number two. Construction hours shall be limited to 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Saturday hours shall be limited to 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. No Sunday or holiday hours absent an emergency. All construction vehicles shall remain strictly on the subject property and not obstruct sidewalks or park in a budding streets. Construction vehicles are prohibited from idling on or near premises outside of construction hours. During construction, efforts shall be undertaken to minimize impacts on the butters, including securing dumpsters, stabilizing soil to guard against erosion from a rain event, and ensuring that public roadways are kept clean in compliance with the town's soil erosion and sediment control standards of conditions of eight 2020. The applicant shall consult with town engineering regarding a preferred construction route to protect town roads, a wash station, and dust management during construction, and shall comply with general engineering requirements.
All right. If everyone's all right with that, can get a motion to approve?
So motion to approve, condition two?
Second.
Second.
Approve made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Roll call vote, Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hari, I. So condition two passes unanimously.
Condition three, prior to site work, the applicant shall provide to the police, building department, and ZBA the name, phone number, and email address of a project contact individual for the duration of the construction process to ensure that any questions or concerns, including those of abutters and residents, are timely managed. So motion to accept, condition three?
Second it.
Motion to accept condition three made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Roll call vote, Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hari, I. Condition three passes unanimously.
Condition four, prior to construction, the applicant shall meet with the Falmouth Police Department to determine when police details would be required, including during relocation of the utility pole. All police details required by the Falmouth Police Department or per the applicant's own choice shall be paid for by the applicant. Motion to approve, condition four?
Second.
All right, motion approved, condition four made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Roll call vote, Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hari, I. Condition four passes unanimously.
Condition five, prior to starting work under the comprehensive permit, the applicant and general contractor shall hold a pre-construction meeting with the building commissioner, town engineer, Department of Public Works representative, site inspector, zoning administrator, town planner, and Board of Health agent to review the conditions to ensure compliance with this decision. Motion to approve, condition five?
Second.
All right, motion was made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hari, I. Condition five passes unanimously.
Condition six, at the applicant's expense, a site inspector will be designated by the town for this project to act in the stead of town engineering due to the lack of capacity to conduct oversight inspections from the firms that have been pre-vetted by the town. The site inspector will perform or oversee inspections, testing, material approval, reports, or other construction-related services required, and report directly to the town's engineering department. The applicant shall establish a fifty-three G account through the zoning board of appeals or the site inspector. Motion to approve, condition number six?
Second.
All right, motion approved made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hari, I. Condition six passes unanimously.
Condition seven, construction shall be in accordance with all requirements of town engineering, including the town's twenty nineteen soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions. No construction shall begin until the required erosion and sediment controls are installed and approved. The stabilized construction entrance and wash station is installed and approved. Stormwater and infiltration areas are protected, and the protection means are approved, and the limit of work is demarcated in the field and approved. Motion to accept, condition seven?
Second.
All right, motion was made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hari, I. Condition seven passes unanimously.
Condition eight, landscaping shall be installed as presented in accordance with the landscape plan with all plant materials maintained in good health. A final landscape plan shall be approved to include any site layout revisions. Any invasive vegetation shall be removed as listed in the twenty seventeen Massachusetts Prohibited Plant List. For the first two years following issuance of the final certificate of occupancy, any plant material substantially diseased or dead shall be removed and replaced. Mature trees, particularly those proximate to lot lines, should be maintained to the extent possible. Trees straddling the property line shall be assumed to be jointly owned and cannot be damaged without prior written approval of both parties. Trees to be protected and preserved shall be identified in the field and on a plan, a copy of which shall be submitted to the zoning board of appeals. Motion to accept, condition eight?
Second.
Right, motion approved made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hari, I. It passes unanimously.
Prior to building permit, condition number nine, the applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit from the engineering division prior to any work within the Shore Street Town right-of-way and prior to issuance of any building permit application for the project. The applicant slash contractor shall meet town standard requirements and post any required bond. Release of the bond shall be subject to approval by the engineering division. The driveway shall remain private. Motion to accept, condition nine?
Second.
All right, uh, motion was made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob? Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
TJ Hari, I. So condition nine passes unanimously.
Condition ten, renovation of the historical dwelling shall reflect the December ten twenty nineteen letter of the Falmouth Historical Commission. Due to the age of this dwelling, prior to any work being done, the applicant shall provide a report by a licensed inspector confirming the presence or absence of any hazardous materials such as ladder asbestos to the Board of Health, Building Commissioner, ZBA, and State, uh, if required. Should such hazardous materials be found, the applicant shall ensure that the work is done by a state-licensed remediator, shall follow strict construction protocol to ensure no neighborhood exposure, and ensure proper disposal during the construction process. Motion to approve, condition ten?
Second it.
All right, motion was made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Ed, I'm sorry, Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hari, I. So condition ten passes unanimously.
Condition eleven, prior to the issuance of a building permit or commencement of construction, the applicant is required to submit to mass housing a request for final approval of the project in accordance with the Comprehensive Permit Rules seven sixty CMR fifty-six dash zero four and the guidelines including part three concerning, concerning affirmative fair housing, marketing, and residence selection. A copy of the final approval letter shall be submitted to the zoning board of appeals. Motion to accept, uh, condition eleven?
Second.
All right, motion approved made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hari, I. So condition eleven passes unanimously.
Condition twelve, the certified plot plan stamped by a licensed surveyor shall be provided to the ZBA for review and approval prior to application for a building permit. The plan shall show at a minimum the following: lot dimensions, driveway limits of pavement, limits of sidewalk, building locations, building footprints matching the architectural plan dimensions, closest distance to nearest property line from each building, retaining wall locations, closest distance to nearest property line from the retaining wall, measured from the limits of excavation required for installation of the wall, including the wall foundation, wall extents, and any required drainage aggregate, reinforced backfill, and geosynthetic reinforcement. Location of drainage structures, including limits of infiltration areas, and the limits of work to be demarcated in the field. This plan shall serve as the base for an as-built plan of the project on completion. Motion to accept, condition twelve?
Second it.
All right, motion to accept, condition twelve, made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Uh, I, I agree, um, Mary Berry, I. The base, should that be basis, a typo?
Oh, this plan serves as the basis?
Yes.
So Noreen, on, on, uh, condition twelve, that last line?
Yeah, so, so the, the purpose for that, and, and it is properly, although I, I suppose you could do either. Basically, what happens is they expect that overlay the final as-built on the original plan. So they look at the original plan as being the base from which they give the permit, and that once the construction is done, that you would overlay the as-built to ensure that you've built the footprints where you said you were. So you could say, uh, yeah, basis is fine as well. Perfectly happy to fix that.
What do we think?
I'm a little confused. Is base the actual word because it's a base and then they're putting an overlay over it?
That was what was intended, but, you know, I, I don't have a problem with changing that one.
All right, why don't we just put basis then, and we'll, uh?
Okay. You know, I think you, I think you would achieve the same means, so.
So motion to accept item twelve with just that word change? Condition.
Second.
All right, so, uh, motion as amended, Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hari, I. So condition twelve passes unanimously.
Condition thirteen, the applicant shall provide amended plans to the zoning board of appeals to demonstrate the removal of the second car bay from building number five and removal of the fourth bedroom from unit three without adding to living space, which shall be confirmed by the zoning administrator prior to the issuance of the building permit. Motion to accept, uh, condition thirteen?
Second.
All right, motion made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hari, I. So condition thirteen passes unanimously.
Condition fourteen, a six-foot-tall fence shall be installed along the perimeter of the premises. At a portion of the southerly lot line, the fence slash railing shall be installed on top of the retaining wall. The height of the fence or railing on top of the retaining wall shall not exceed six feet of exposed height to abutting properties. The fence shall be stepped down at any point approaching Shore Street or the sidewalk to ensure that no sight distance or view of pedestrians is impeded. The fence shall be maintained in perpetuity by the Forty Shore Street Homeowners Association or successors in the signs. Installation of the fence shall be completed prior to the issuance of a building permit for any residential dwellings. Motion to accept, condition fourteen?
Second.
All right, motion made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hari, I. Condition fourteen passes unanimously.
Uh, condition fifteen, condominium fees shall be adjusted to three-point-eight-six percent for each affordable unit homeowner and fifteen-point-three-eight percent for market rate units in perpetuity. The condominium fee shall not affect equal voting rights for each unit. One-time or special assessment shall be managed at the same percentage as the condominium fees. The applicant is required to provide, one, a regulatory agreement and declaration of restrictive covenants for ownership project; and, two, an affordable housing deed rider specifying the, that affordable unit shall remain affordable perpetuity; and, three, a declaration of trust for the homeowners association; and, four, condominium documents, including rules, regulations, and restrictions, and the master deed. These collective documents shall be provided to the zoning board of appeals for approval by town council prior to the issuance of any building permit and subsequently recorded at the registry of deeds in Barnstable. The applicant shall create a limited dividend organization and be limited in its profits under master general laws, uh, C forty B. Any excess profit shall be paid by the applicant and distributed as required by the subsidizing agency in accordance with applicable law, regulations, and guidelines. Motion to accept, uh, condition fifteen?
Second.
Motion made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hari, I. Condition fifteen passes unanimously.
Condition sixteen, the permit shall not take effect until a copy of the decision bearing the certification of the town clerk that twenty days has elapsed after the decision has been filed in the office of the town clerk with no appeal being filed, is recorded in the Barnstable registry of deeds, or that an appeal has been filed within such time. Any person exercising rights under duly appealed comprehensive permit does so at risk that a court may reverse the permit, and that any construction performed under the permit may be ordered undone. Motion to accept, condition fif- sixteen?
Second.
All right, motion made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
I think Barry might be muted.
Yep.
All right, I'm sorry, uh, Mary Berry, I.
Thank you, Mary. Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Uh, Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hari, I. So that condition passes unanimously.
Condition sixteen, the permit shall not take effect until a copy of the decision bear- oh, I actually did it, sorry. And I want to go ahead, I don't want to go back. Um, okay, prior to occupancy permit, this is condition seventeen. The two affordable units shall be designated as building three, a three-bedroom, and building six, a four-bedroom, as shown on Longshore Village Site Layout Plan Sheet C dash one oh one, revision date six-three-twenty. The additional or fourth bedroom added to building three shall be eliminated, and that unit will remain as a three-bedroom unit. One affordable unit must be sold per three market rate units. A certificate of occupancy for the final market rate unit may not be issued until all affordable units have been completed and granted a certificate of occupancy. All dwellings shall have the same general exterior appearance and construction quality and be in conformance with the approved plans. Motion to accept, condition seventeen?
Second it.
All right, motion approved made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hari, I. So condition seventeen passes unanimously.
Condition eighteen, a certified as-built plan shall be provided to the ZBA for review for conformance to the approved plans prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. The as-built plan shall be an overlay on the site layout plan C dash one oh one with the addition of the proposed stormwater management system structures and pipes added to serve as the approved base plan. Any deviations from the approved plan shall be clearly shown in red line over the base plan, which should be faded back for clarity. The as-built shall be certified by both a licensed surveyor and registered engineer that work was performed in conformance with the approved plans and all permits. Motion to accept, condition eighteen?
Second.
All right, motion was made by, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hari, I. Condition, uh, eighteen passes unanimously.
Condition nineteen, prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, the site address forty Shore Street and building number shall be posted in accordance with subsection ninety-nine dash one as approved by the fa- by the fire prevention inspector. Building one shall be the rehabilitated structure, and numbering shall proceed clockwise around the site to building eight, located immediately east of the proposed stormwater leaching systems as shown in the site layout plan C dash one oh one, and to be formally assigned with building permit application. Motion to accept, it's condition nineteen?
Second it.
All right, motion was made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hari, I. Condition nineteen passes unanimously.
Condition twenty, the utility easement shall be provided, granting the town access to the water main, hydrant, curb stops, and meter locations in a form acceptable to the town. The fee for review plus filing shall be paid by the applicant. Separate applications for water service shall be made for each dwelling with appropriate plans, including a meter request. Motion to accept, condition twenty?
Second it.
All right, motion was made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hari, I. Condition twenty passes unanimously.
Condition twenty-one, as-built drawings shall be submitted to the water superintendent and include ties for valves, hydrants, and fittings on the water main. A tie card for each house shall be provided with appropriate distances and locations identified. Motion to accept, condition twenty-one?
Second it.
All right, motion made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hari, I. Condition twenty-one passes unanimously.
Condition twenty-two, final lottery agent, lottery plan, and marketing plan shall be submitted to the zoning board of appeals prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Motion to accept, condition twenty-two?
Second it.
All right, motion was made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I. Ed Van Kuren, aye.
And TJ Hurry, aye, uh, that condition passes unanimously.
Condition twenty-three, prior to the issuance of any s-
Oh, sorry, sorry to interrupt. F one changed to twenty-three, which is the second line. Where it says the applicant shall enter into a monitoring agreement. And what we want to put after that is copy to be provided to the town. Which will replace the language that we have there, which says to be approved by town council. Because as we saw in the previous decision, town council does not anticipate reviewing the monitoring agreement.
Thank you for catching that, Mary.
When we say copy to be provided to the town, is it any specific entity in the town or?
Uh, so I can certainly insert zoning board.
Okay, so let's see.
These, these monitoring service agreements are standard agreements and they fill in the blanks for each.
Alright, so, uh, condition twenty-three, prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall enter into a monitoring agreement. Copy to be, to be provided to the zoning board of appeals. All costs associated with the monitoring shall be borne by the applicant until the sale of the last affordable unit and thereafter by the sellers of the affordable units. A copy of all financial information by the monitoring agent shall be provided to the zoning board of appeals after the initial round of sales. Motion to accept condition twenty-three as read.
I seconded.
Seconded.
Thank you, Mary, so that was, um, made by Bob and seconded by Mary, uh, Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
And TJ Hurry, aye, so twenty, condition twenty-three, uh, passes unanimously.
Additional conditions, condition twenty-four, the maximum height of the dwelling shall be no more than thirty feet. Motion to accept condition twenty-four.
Seconded.
Alright, motion was made by Bob, second by Ed, Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
And TJ Hurry, aye, that motion passes unanimously.
Condition twenty-five, where this comprehensive permit is made specifically- Did I jump the gun?
You might have.
So, is that on twenty-four?
We're, wait, we're on twenty-five, right?
We are, I don't know.
Twenty-four passed.
Okay, so, because I heard it after, I didn't know if I did something wrong, so.
No, 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 you're good.
Okay, so again, condition twenty-five, where the compre- where this comprehensive permit is made specifically under master no laws, chapter forty B, section twenty to twenty-three. Allowing the override of local zoning density, there should be no as-of-right changes made to the subject property. Any changes requested shall be properly submitted to the zoning board of appeals as provided under master no laws, chapter forty B. Motion to accept condition twenty-five.
I seconded.
Okay, Mary, uh, so the motion was made by Bob and seconded by Mary, Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
And TJ Hurry, aye, condition twenty-five passes unanimously.
Condition twenty-six, the development shall be limited to a maximum of eight single-family dwellings with a maximum of twenty-eight bedrooms. Four units shall be three bedroom units and four units shall be four bedroom units. All four bedroom units shall have a minimum of two full bathrooms. Two of the units, one three bedroom unit and one four bedroom unit shall remain in perpetuity affordable to eligible purchasers. Whose annual income shall not exceed eighty percent of the area median income as determined by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. The two affordable dwellings shall be eligible for inclusion in the town subsidized housing inventory, S H I, maintained by D H C D. There should be no increase in the number of bedrooms, which would be a violation of the zoning bylaw in this comprehensive permit. This provision, this provision must be added to the condominium documents and rules and regulations. Building one, three, four and eight shall be the three bedroom units. Building two, five, six and seven shall be four bedroom units. Motion to accept condition twenty-six.
Second.
Alright, that was made by Bob, seconded by Mary. Roll call vote, Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
And TJ Hurry, aye, so condition twenty-six passes unanimously.
Condition twenty-seven, there should be no further division or subdivision of the premises or the, or the creation of additional housing units or any other structures such as sheds without further approval of the zoning board of appeals in the form of an amendment to this decision. Motion to accept condition twenty-seven.
Second.
Alright, so motion was made by Bob, seconded by Ed, Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
And TJ Hurry, aye, so condition twenty-seven passes unanimously.
Condition twenty-eight, the development shall be limited to a maximum of twenty-eight bedrooms. Basement space may not be used as a bedroom space, nor may studies, offices or family rooms be converted to bedroom space. Any private, non-bedroom rooms shall have a minimum four foot wide cased opening. Motion to accept condition twenty-eight.
Seconded.
Alright, motion was made by Bob, seconded by Ed, Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
And TJ Hurry, aye, so twenty-eight passes unanimously.
Condition twenty-nine, parking shall be limited to all single car garages plus two spaces in the individual driveway. There should be no additional living s- ar- area added following any garage space reduction. The driveway spaces shall have crushed stone. Motion to accept condition twenty-nine.
Second.
Alright, motion approved made by Bob, seconded by Ed, Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
And TJ Hurry, aye, so condition, uh, I'm sorry, was it twenty-nine? Twenty-nine passes unanimously.
Yeah.
Condition thirty, two affordable year-round, not seasonal, family ownership units shall be included in the subsidized housing inventory, S H I. And shall be subject to a regulatory agreement, fair marketing and income guidelines. The affordable units may not be rented or sublet. Certificate of compliance with affordable housing regulation shall be submitted after the sale to the zoning board of appeals. ZBA and FALMS Affordable Housing Designee. This certification shall include documentation that each affordable ownership unit is occupied by a qualified owner as their primary residence. Homeownership Association, HOA fees shall be adjusted to be three point eight six for affordable units. However, voting in the HOA shall not be reduced. I, I think that needs to, I, did the last one say voting rights?
Tell me where it goes and I might be able to help.
Uh, it was the last section that we listed the percentage, the three point.
It wasn't not in the last.
Yeah, so, so in the item, in condition fifteen, it says people voting rights.
Three point eight six percent of the affordable units?
Yeah, so. So, in, 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 uh, condition number thirty, after the word voting, I think this one also needs to say voting rights. Just to match. So I'm going to reread this one, so condition thirty, the two affordable year-round, not seasonal, family ownership units should be included in the subsid- subsidized housing inventory, S H I. And shall be subject to a regulatory agreement, fair marketing and income guidelines. The affordable units may not be rented or sublet. Certificate of compliance with affordable housing regulation shall be submitted after the sale to the zoning board of appeals, ZBA and FALMS Affordable Housing Designee. The certification shall include documentation that each affordable ownership unit is occupied by a qualified owner as their primary residence. Homeowners- homeownership association, HOA fees shall be adjusted to be three point eight six percent for the affordable units. However, voting rights in the H O L, in the HOA shall not be reduced. The affordable units shall remain affordable in perpetuity with a use restriction recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds. Copy to the zoning board of appeals and Affordable Housing Designee and shall survive sale. Any resale of an affordable unit shall be properly managed by an affordable housing specialist and reported in advance to the ZBA and the town's Affordable Housing Designee. And include the fact that any future owner is subject to all terms and conditions listed herein and as provided in the condominium documents. So motion to accept condition thirty with that one change of the word rights.
Alright, motion was made by Bob, seconded by Ed, Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
And TJ Hurry, aye, so condition thirty passes unanimously. And, uh, we are at ten o'clock, Scott's motion to continue the board's business for the night.
Some motion-
Until ten o'clock.
Yeah. So Scott, pick us a time.
Yes, Scott, how much longer do you think we need?
Ten twenty?
Uh, there you go. So I'll second that ten twenty.
Alright, motion to continue the board's business to ten twenty tonight. Made by Scott, seconded by Bob, roll call vote, we'll get everyone involved, uh, Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Scott?
Scott's on Scott.
Ken?
And Forman, aye.
Ken, are you at the, are you at the, uh? Put me out. I recognize the background. The conference table? How did you get there?
Oh, gosh, I don't know.
Alright, James?
James Morse.
And TJ Hurry, aye, so the board's business is continued to ten twenty and I assure everyone that is just a background, uh. Ken is obviously not at a restaurant right now, alright, moving on.
So we did accept the thirty, correct?
Yep, we did, yep, thirty was.
Okay, so, uh, condition thirty-one, first floor master bedrooms and first floor bathrooms shall be handicapped accessible. Handicapped accessible shall mean that the units will have thirty-two inch wide doors minimum. Uh, which will allow wheelchair to maneuver within the unit and to the full, and enter the first floor bathroom. All four bedroom dwellings shall have a minimum of two bathrooms. Motion to accept condition thirty-one.
I'd like to propose an amendment to those words.
What's, what's, uh, Mary, we'll put the motion up for a moment.
Shall be handicapped accessible as defined by the ADA. Americans with Disabilities Act.
Okay, so let me re, uh, read this quickly, so first floor master bedrooms and first floor bathrooms shall be handicapped accessible as defined by ADA, the American Disabilities Act. Handicapped accessible should mean that the units will have thirty-two inch wide doors minimum. Which will allow wheelchair to ma- maneuver within the unit and to the first floor bathroom, all four bedroom dwellings.
And add to that also at the end of the first floor bedroom, uh, bathrooms and all other requirements in the ADA. For handicapped accessible.
So I think, and you know, obviously it's, it's your choice here, but I think that the developer had agreed to make these units first floor accessible as opposed to first floor handicapped. In other words, I think they, the intent is that these units are visitable and that unless somebody purchases and requests some further handicapped requirements, for example, lower counters or, or any other uh, changes that you would make, that they're not guaranteeing to make those. They're, what they're guaranteeing is that you can enter the unit and that you can access the bathroom for handicapped and that um, beyond that, it would probably be on a case by case basis.
Well, I would, I would argue that in the very beginning where you have your findings, you said that they, they said that it would be handicapped accessible. All units would be handicapped accessible. And that's from where I'm, I'm asking that those words be added.
Right, I guess the only question I have for you is, does that therefore mean that they need to reduce counter height and make all those? Make, I, I don't think.
I'm, I'm not an ADA expert, but, but in, in reading it as a non-expert. And reading the ADA, it does not require those things. What you're saying.
Okay, so you're just talking about accessibility through the unit then?
Absolutely, but that, that's more general than what you have here, which is very specific. They, they specifically agreed to handicap accessible.
Right, for, for the entrance and for the bathroom, right?
No, it's the first floor.
Okay.
That's exactly what they said they were going to do, and so it's the first floor. You can put in those details that you have there if you'd like to put them in. But that actually is a little bit more specific even than the ADA. So leave it in, but refer to the definition of handicapped accessible that's in the ADA. Law.
Okay.
Regulation.
So the proposed change then is, is at the end of the first sentence as defined by ADA?
Absolutely.
And was there another change?
Well, I had said shall be handicapped accessible as, as defined in the ADA.
Right.
So, and then we would still keep the, um, the increased details of the thirty-two inch wide doors?
Absolutely, if you want that, that's fine.
Okay. So I rework, so then if this, item thirty-one, condition thirty-one, first floor master bedrooms and the first floor. Or actually, so are we doing the whole first floor or just the master bedrooms and the baths?
It's the whole first floor according to.
The beginning.
That's what you're sa- it's saying, I think. Well, ADA definition is you're gonna have to, you know, the definition of handicapped accessible.
Okay, so.
Is that you have to be able to move throughout the whole entire thing. It makes perfect sense because if somebody can get through the front door but they can't get to the bathroom because of the way the interior is constructed. It does them no good to have those openings, that amount of, of space.
Alright, so how about if you say first floor master bedrooms and the, or the first floor including the master bedroom and the first floor bathroom shall be handicapped accessible as defined by the ADA, so that would-
Absolutely good.
Whole first floor.
That would cover it.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so, uh, condition, so condition thirty-one, the first floor including master bedrooms and, including the first floor master bedroom and first floor ma- and first floor bathroom shall be handicapped accessible as defined by ADA, American Disabilities Act. Handicapped accessible should mean that the units will have thirty-two inch wide doors minimum. Which will allow wheelchair, a wheelchair to maneuver within the unit and enter the first floor bathroom. All four bedroom dwellings shall have a minimum of two full bathrooms.
I would say handicapped accessible as defined in ADA, which shall include, just like the other one. That the units have thirty-two inch wide doors minimum, which will allow wheelchair to move, maneuver within the unit and enter the first floor bathroom. I just want it tied to ADA, I don't, I, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think it, it's probably repetitive to say that you're allowing wheelchair to maneuver within the first floor bathroom where you already said in your first the, the whole first floor.
Absolutely, that's.
Okay, so I can just get rid of that, uh, repetition where we say first floor again.
Super.
Okay.
So then I would make a motion to accept thirty-one as discussed, uh, with those changes that Mary mentioned.
I'll second.
Very good, motion was made by Bob, seconded by Mary, Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
Second.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed? We got you, Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
There we go, TJ Hurry, aye, so, uh, the, condition thirty-one, uh, passes unanimously as discussed.
Condition thirty-two, a mailbox station shall be sighted on the lot in consultation with the postal department and shown on the site plan. Motion to accept condition thirty-two.
Alright, motion made by Bob, seconded by Ed, Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
And TJ Hurry, aye, so that passes unanimously.
Condition thirty-three, trash removal and snow plowing shall remain private with the HOA and shall not hinder Shore Street. Motion to accept, uh, condition thirty-three.
Seconded.
Alright, motion, uh, made by Bob, seconded by Ed, Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
Bob? Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
TJ Hurry, I. So, thirty-three passes unanimously.
Condition thirty-four, the waiver from bylaw subsection two forty dash twenty-four A where only one single family home is allowed per lot. Motion to accept condition thirty-four.
Seconded.
All right, motion by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. So, thirty-four can, passes unanimously.
Condition thirty-five, the waiver from bylaw subsection two forty to sixty-six C eight regarding the number of bedrooms exceeding one bedroom per thirteen thousand five hundred square feet of lot area requiring an enhanced nitrogen removal system. Motion to accept condition thirty-five.
Seconded.
All right, motion was made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Uh, Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. So, that condition passes unanimously.
Condition thirty-six, the waiver from bylaw subsection two forty to sixty-six D regarding one dwelling per lot. Motion to accept condition thirty-six.
Seconded.
All right, motion made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
TJ Hurry, I. So, that condition passes unanimously.
Condition thirty-seven, wa, the waiver from bylaw two forty to sixty-seven requiring minimum frontage. Motion to accept condition thirty-seven.
Seconded.
Motion was made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. That condition passes unanimously.
Condition thirty-eight, the waiver from bylaw two forty to sixty-eight A requiring minimum setback from street frontage. Motion to accept condition thirty-eight.
Seconded.
Motion was made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. So, condition thirty-eight passes unanimously.
Condition thirty-nine, the waiver from bylaw two forty to sixty-nine maximum lot coverage by structure. Motion to accept condition thirty-nine.
Seconded.
All right, motion was made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. Thirty-nine passed unanimously.
Condition forty, any waiver of town bylaws not specifically granted herein is denied. Motion to accept condition forty.
Seconded.
Motion made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. So, condition forty passes unanimously.
Condition forty-one, the comprehensive permit shall be a master permit which shall subsume all local permits and approvals normally issued by local boards other than as specifically enumerated in the condition. The Board of Health and Conservation Commission are excluded from this provision. Motion to accept condition forty-one.
Seconded.
All right, motion was made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. So, forty-one passes unanimously.
Condition forty-two, this comprehensive permit shall not be transferred without the prior express written approval of the zoning board of appeals. Motion to accept condition forty-two.
Seconded.
All right, motion made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. So, that condition passes unanimously.
Condition forty-three, each condition in this decision shall run with the land and shall in accordance with its terms be applicable to and binding on the applicant and the applicant's successors and assigns. Motion to accept condition forty-three.
Seconded.
All right, motion made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. So, forty-three passes unanimously.
Condition forty-four, exterior parking or storage of any unregistered vehicle on the premises is strictly prohibited. This shall be included in the condominium documents. Motion to accept condition forty-four.
Seconded.
All right, motion made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
TJ Hurry, I. Forty-four passes unanimously.
Condition forty-five, there shall be no surface grading onto the abutting town parcel forty-seven B dash zero one dash zero three two dash zero zero zero. Absent prior approval by the zoning board of appeals, retaining wall is proposed to be a maximum exposed height of five feet. There is proposed to be a fence or rail installed on top of the retaining wall. The height of the exposed wall plus fencing or railing may not exceed six feet as viewed from abutting properties. Motion to accept condition forty-five.
Seconded.
All right, motion made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
TJ Hurry, I. So, forty-five passes unanimously.
Condition forty-six, identified unsuitable soils and buried debris shall be properly removed and disposed of in accordance with the Board of Health and Building Commissioner and State DEP requirements. Motion to accept condition forty-six.
Seconded.
All right, motion by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
TJ Hurry, I. Uh, so forty-six passes unanimously.
Condition forty-seven, the site inspector will be specifically responsible for ensuring adherence to the requirements and soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions. In the inspection and approval of the driveway subgrade, gravel base, binder course and curbing and finish course. At no point shall the contractor construct on a driveway surface that was not inspected and approved by the site inspector. The inspection engineer will be specifically responsible to review the as-built plans for compliance with the approved plans. Motion to accept condition forty-seven.
Seconded.
All right, motion made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
TJ Hurry, I. So, forty-seven passes unanimously.
Condition forty-eight, installation of the retaining wall, including all wall components such as drainage layer, impervious layer, geosynthetic grid and other design feature shall be set back sufficiently from the property line such that construction, inspection, maintenance and repair of the wall can be contained entirely on the premises without impacting abutting properties. The design and drawing shall include cross-sections, profiles, details and layout, including limited of work required on the site. The height of the retaining wall plus fence on top may not exceed six feet in height. The perimeter fence shall not exceed six feet in height. Motion to accept condition forty-eight.
Seconded.
All right, motion made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
TJ Hurry, I. So, forty-eight passes unanimously.
Condition forty-nine, all stormwater runoff shall be directed to recharge within the premises. Motion to accept condition forty-nine.
Seconded.
All right, motion made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
TJ Hurry, I. Forty-nine passes unanimously.
Uh, so before we go on, I'll never make in two minutes, so I would make a motion, uh, to extend till ten thirty.
All right, motion to extend board's business to ten thirty made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Ken, live, live from, uh.
And Forman, I.
Thank you, Scott. James?
James Morse.
Thank you, James. And TJ Hurry, I. Board's business is continued to ten thirty. So close, Bob.
Yeah, I know. Uh, forty-seven. Uh, we're on fifty?
Fifty.
Fifty.
All right, so condition fifty, maintenance and provision, maintenance and preservation of dry wells, leaching trenches, catch basins, manholes and subsurface leaching systems in addition to fences, walls, driveway and parking areas shall be the responsibility of and added to the homeowners association documents. Uh, motion to accept condition fifty.
Seconded.
All right, motion made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. So, fifty passes unanimously.
Condition fifty-one, the town is specifically not waiving fees associated with construction included but not limited to the water line, water tapping, sleeve and valve. Water meters and services and engineering such as the bond for the street opening permits and building department fees. The plan involves the installation of one town specified fire hydrant at the terminus of the water main. Plan shall be submitted to the Department of Public Works Water and Superintendent. Private driveway shall not be considered for acceptance by the town and such. The driveway and water main shall be privately owned and maintained. Oh, and maintenance shall be the responsibility of the homeowners association in perpetuity. Any required utility easement shall be in a form and manner as prescribed by the town. Plans shall show location of septic components and water service. Plan shall state all standards, policies, construction practices or rules and regulations of the Falmouth Water Department shall be adhered to throughout the duration of the project. Motion to accept condition fifty-one.
Seconded.
All right, motion was made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. So, fifty-one passes unanimously.
Condition fifty-two, the water line construction shall be in accordance with the town's water department standards. Water department fees and requirements shall be the responsibility of the developer. The applicant shall conduct a hydrant flow test to determine available flow and pressure to fight a fire and provide the results to the water superintendent and fire chief for approval. The procedure for flushing, disinfecting and pressure testing of the water main shall be approved by the town's water superintendent. I do have one question on this because we had something tonight with the flow test. Should this say that the town, that someone needs to be there for the test?
I think, I think so.
All right, so, yeah, so I can certainly add that, um, I mean, I guess you would like to think that they would know better, but, yeah, we can certainly.
So, maybe you could put the applicant shall conduct a fire hydrant flow test, um, uh, with town designate present.
Right.
To determine available flow and pressure to fight a fire, et cetera. So, then I make a motion to accept condition fifty-two with the changes that the town designate be present for the hydrant flow test.
Seconded.
All right, so, uh, motion was made by Bob and seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. So, that, uh, that condition passes unanimously.
Condition fifty-three. Dark sky compliant lighting shall be provided and spotlights are prohibited. Any lighting installed to a side or rear dwellings as required to be code shall be dark sky compliant and not shed light off the subject law. Motion to accept condition fifty-three.
Seconded.
All right, motion was made by Bob and seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hurry, I.
Condition fifty.
Unanimously.
Condition fifty-four. Any deviation, no matter how minor, from plans submitted and approved by the zoning board of appeals shall be submitted to the board for approval prior to implementation of said change. The zoning administrator may make a determination as to whether the changes are minor in nature and can be approved administratively or whether they will require a hearing for an amendment. Changes made prior to an approval may be subject to a full hearing and are at risk that the ZBA may deny the request subjecting any unapproved construction be ordered undone. Motion to accept condition fifty-four.
All right, motion made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. So, fifty-four passes unanimously.
Condition fifty-five, the per, this permit shall lapse three years from the date at which the decision is filed in the town clerk's office. If a substantial use of the comprehensive permit has not sooner commenced except for good cause shown as determined by the zoning board of appeals. Motion to accept condition fifty-five.
Seconded.
All right, motion made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Well, not here, but in the future it'd be wonderful to have an example or two of what a good cause might be. But I agree, um, Mary Berry, I.
Thank you, Mary. Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. So, fifty-five passes unanimously.
Just, oh, sorry, just so that you know, just quick, um, insert there. So, good cause shown is language that the state uses. They don't provide specific examples, but, you know, sometimes there are circumstances that prohibit somebody from starting construction. And so, whatever that delay is, they're expected to come in and discuss that with you. And then you're expected to look at that and decide whether that is a good cause where they were unable to start. So, we don't really have examples for that. That would be on a case by case basis.
I'll need to show good cause shown in my day job very shortly, so I'm hoping that works out well for me.
All right, so.
You'll come up with some examples, TJ.
So, condition fifty-six, the zoning board of appeals reserves the right to recall the applicant with such notice as the board deems proper to discuss a resolution to just of unresolved matters of concern or non-compliance. Motion to approve condition fifty-six.
All right, motion was made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. So, that condition passes unanimously.
So, then I would make a motion, uh, to approve the findings and conditions for the comprehensive permit for forty Shore Street, Falmouth, Massachusetts. Assessors map forty-seven B, section one, parcel eight, lot zero for eight single-family dwellings, two of which will be affordable in perpetuity.
Seconded.
All right, motion was made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. Congratulations, everyone. It passes unanimously.
And three minutes to spare. Talk quick.
Three minutes to spare.
Nice.
All right, board discussion management of abutter participation for Zoom hearings. Um, I'll just make the mention, and this is the way it's been going recently with Zoom. Um, comments tend to roll in throughout the entire, um, throughout the entire hearing itself. Um, so, if, if this was live and in person, we would have a designated portion for public comment. I mean, obviously, I, I allow people to, to give time to type in and, and voice their concerns or questions about the project, but uh, we, we were up against trying to continue something tonight and, and things were still coming in, so I'm I'm balancing that concern versus what I'm told by downtown council to read in, everything that comes in, so. Uh, I don't know. Should, should I be cutting it off at some point and, and just give everyone a heads up that no more public comment would be taken after a period of time or?
I don't know, but I, I think we're gonna have one more issue. So, we've got, we've got two projects coming back for substantial change public meetings. And my guess is on those projects, there's gonna be a lot of comment. Is there any way when we have those in cases, a lot of people, that we can have somebody assigned to do a queue? Where people can just, they can notify them when they're up next to speak?
I would like to kind of reiterate that part of, or just add to it. The, I, I've noticed that in a few places, towns in Massachusetts, they are allowing the public to use Zoom. And that's what Bob's, Robert's talking about, to come in and, uh, use Zoom and do it live. Um, one might wanna see what they're doing and see if we can't do it on these particular. Well, I don't even know if you can do it on the forty Bs alone.
No, well, we've, we've specifically been advised by downtown council to not do that. Apparently, the Zoom bombing has been a massive problem. And beyond the fact that if that takes place, it interrupts your meeting, but beyond that, Falmouth Cable TV does tape these meetings. So, if you experience that, it will be forever in the record. So, town council has been very, very, very explicit about not doing that. What they have said, and we can certainly perhaps include this in the notices to abutters for hearings, is that we need to have them send us, um, material in writing in advance or they're able to tape a presentation or they're able to put together a PowerPoint. They're allowed to participate, but they have to send it to us in advance. And the board of selectmen are following that same protocol.
So, would.
I, I think it puts them on a very big disadvantage.
It does.
I would think that there might be another option, which is to hold off on all of these forty Bs until we get different kinds of. instructions from, from the governor.
So we.
And I would, and I'm sure that nobody wants to do that.
Yeah.
Maybe there's something in between that can be used because technology is a wonderful thing.
It is, but what happens is that they're, they're not going to allow the requests for affordable housing to be treated any differently than somebody doing an addition on their house. So as the board, you have a choice. Uh, you can hear no cases or you can hear them all, but we can't treat the forty Bs differently.
Okay, so one thing I would say is when we do regular cases, we have let in the applicant, the person who's, who's, um, owns the home, the the engineers, we let all these people in.
Right.
And I, I just don't see the equity in not allowing somehow there can be screening and there can be additional security. That's not our job. It just seems to me that it's an uneven playing field. And I think there has to be some kind of a resolution that people can come up with.
Yeah.
She's exactly right.
I, I do, I do agree with you.
If notices are sent out to abutters, why couldn't the abutters that get the notices have the opportunity to contact the ZBA to sign up so that they can participate through Zoom, since they're the ones that are actually getting the letter? And I, I only ask that because I have the same issue that Mary just did. I see no reason why the applicant should be able to speak in Zoom and only people represented by council that have questions about the applicant project, that council can appear. So it actually seems like you are treating the applicants differently. And I know you, they don't wanna do that. So I don't see why an applicant that gets a notice can't have the opportunity, just them, to call in and if they want, sign in to say that they would like to take part in the presentation. They could let them know that they have a time limit and that when it comes to it, the chairman can actually designate each one of those people on a pre, on a pre-reserved list. And the, uh, IT could then activate them as a participant.
Yeah, so, uh, you know, again, I can check back with town council, but we've had multiple conversations about this. And I have been specifically advocating for the abutters and for their participation. And town council has repeatedly told me that, and it's not just hearsay. There have been multiple reports of this Zoom bombing. Parents.
I, I, I understand that.
We shouldn't hear them.
My question is, why should a council representing an abutter be allowed to participate in a Zoom hearing, yet the abutter can't participate?
Yeah, so town, town council has started to recommend against that as well. Um, my thought to you was that if somebody has gone through the trouble as an individual or a neighborhood to hire counsel to represent them, that it seems fair to allow that. You, conservation does not even allow that.
What about, what about, uh, what about, for example, a neighborhood association? I mean, this often happens and then we.
Yeah, yeah, no, town, town council has, has strictly limited participation to the applicant.
Well, I, I mean.
It's not, it's, it's not ideal, but.
Is that an opinion? Pre-recorded. They certainly could submit.
I don't, I really think that, that it's, this isn't true. I, I cannot believe the town council would want to set up a situation where people could actually sue us, the town, for not having adequate ways that abutters can be part of this, this whole process. And if that's the case, it seems to me all of the forty Bs should be put off and maybe all the cases should be put off until there's a different rendering and opinion coming down from the governor. But as I said, there are towns that are doing it.
Right, but I, I think, and, you know, perhaps fortunately for Falmouth, you have town council here who is acting very much on the cautious side. And they have seen what has befallen other communities. And they're trying to protect Falmouth and not have that happen. So what they've said is that abutters can email. They can send you letters. They can videotape presentations and send them ahead. So there are multiple ways they can participate. The only exception is live. They're limited to, for the live participation to the chat function only.
Okay, then I, I would make an alternative, um, consideration. And that is that the applicant and the applicant's lawyers and the applicant's engineers can all do the exact same thing.
Yeah, but then you can't.
Presentations would be done ahead of time.
But you can't ask.
Why they have to be live? We've seen repeatedly where the applicant's lawyers are in fact participating even after we close hearings. It's not a fair way to do this.
I, I would agree, but I guess what I'm representing to you is this is the policy that I have been advised to follow by town council and it's been supported by the select board. I'm, I'm glad, actually, town council has been in touch with me and they would actually like to have a Zoom chat with you guys. So I think what we can do is add this topic on to that and we can pick a date to, uh, you know, have a Zoom meeting with town council to discuss that.
Because, for example, we've just said that we're, we need hearings for these ones that are substantive changes. So we're not gonna really have hearings because people can't really participate in it?
So no, we would have the hearings. The, again, though, the abutter participation is limited to their emailing ahead, they're sending letters ahead, they're sending taped video presentations ahead.
No, no. Do they know that they can send? Being limited means that they're limited to the process.
Right.
They can't, they can't respond. There's no rebuttal. How many meetings have we had that spurred rebuttals from the, the community? And they are taking away from this.
Well, I guess here's your other option is that instead of holding a meeting that takes one night, what you could do is have the presentation by the developer. And then that would allow abutters to send in rebuttals or participation in time for your subsequent hearing.
That would be my suggestion. Requiring, I'm sorry, James. What, what precludes us from requiring that the applicant's presentations be pre-recorded?
So if the applicant's presentations are pre-recorded, you are foregoing an opportunity to ask them questions and.
No, they can ask, they can be live for questions. But if we're going to ask that a butters do it pre-recorded, we should be asking the applicant to do it pre-recorded as well.
Well, I mean, I think if they're participating with you live, what would be the point of pre-recording?
So I, I just have a question because this seems to be a, a procedural thing.
You know what? Maybe, maybe the thing to do is to table this and resume this conversation with town council so that you can get full resolution on why they're presenting this policy for the town.
Because FinCom allows public participation.
I couldn't tell you what FinCom does. I.
In, in what capacity, Bob? Sorry.
I find that hard to believe, but.
Yeah, they do. They allow public participation on the meetings.
But how so? Like elevated or through, through Zoom? Through the, through the Brady Bunch squares here? Yeah.
You know, I, it, alls I can say is if, if they are limited to this, I don't know how you would ever close a hearing. Because.
Suggestion would be not to close it until at least the next scheduled meeting. That gives people who may be watching who wanna add some type of rebuttal a week or two to.
Oh, I agree, James. I totally agree. But what happens at the second meeting, when you know there's gonna be rebuttal the second? Or the third meeting, when something new comes up and there's rebuttal? At some point, you're just gonna be shutting them off and they haven't had the chance to do it. I still don't understand why a notified abutter that's getting written notification from the town for something that will, can specifically affect their property rights and values is not allowed to register with the town in advance for the night of the meeting? Whether they have, yeah, whether they have town council or not, there's nothing that says they have to hire an attorney. And then at the meeting, just like we have now, honestly, on some of the applicants, we don't know half these people out when they show up. We're not, we're not going through and saying, what's this, you know?
Really not that different. It's not that different than live testimony and there are times when, uh, the chairman in the live testimony situation has to cut off the applicant. And so that's, that's enough. And frankly, it's easier to do in a Zoom format. You just turn them off. I mean, I think we have the technical ability to do that. So, uh, you know, it's, it's like watching a presidential debate. I mean, you know, you turn them off.
I, I guess what I would still say to you is, uh, prior to making a firm determination, I would like for you to hear directly from town council so that you have that assurance and that in, information as to why this is the town's policy.
Noreen, may I ask a simple question?
Absolutely.
Is that his opinion or is that the final say on how this goes? Or do we have any input on how we conduct these meetings?
I've been told that it's town policy that we operate specifically that way. You know, they're, they're trying to ensure that you don't have the Zoom bombing. And I, I would say to you, whether somebody is a certified abutter or not, you still risk the same level of something going wrong.
Well, we've elevated other people, other than the applicant representative and the lawyer. Somebody wants to be elevated, we elevate them and then they speak without even being. So what's the difference in allowing director butters to do the same thing? At least give them the opportunity to react in real time to, to the hearing.
Yep, and, and I've brought that up to town council and they've said no. So.
Town, if town council wants to meet through Zoom to discuss it, I'm all aboard. I wanna make sure it's done prior to those two forty Bs coming up. Because I know from, I know from Helms Circle, when we sat on it, there was a lot of people involved.
Sure. Okay, well, I will, um, contact them tomorrow and then I'll reach out to you guys and we'll pick a date that works.
Great.
I think that is the point. It, you know, it's not totally open. It can be screened in the sense that you're talking about people who have some, uh, uh, you know, some standing as abutters coming to us and asking for permission to speak. So it's.
Right, and, and I'm not, I'm not discounting anybody's rights. In fact, that's bothered me all along. But like I said, town council has been very firm about how we are to manage this or not. And.
But you know, it really isn't. That's why we have a chair to regulate it. That's right. And it's really not any different than public live testimony in a room.
No, I, I think the problem though is that if something untoward appears on the screen, even if you turn them off, it's already happened.
So you can even have people not be able to do the video. You can program them to do all of this.
Right, so the, the, what they've suggested is that people pre-tape and send it into us. And that way they know that it's been pre-screened so that there's not an issue.
That's, this is a, this is, it, it just doesn't make sense to me.
Time, time out.
We have a constitution that allows people to.
I know, I know you're the messenger, Noreen. We just need to, we need to talk to town council.
Okay, let's, yeah, let's just put it with that. Okay.
Okay, TJ, I have one question for Noreen.
Go ahead, Ed.
The, uh, Noreen, do, do you sign off for occupancy permits for buildings?
I do not.
So. So we don't have any say, once the job is done, whether it gets inspected properly?
Right, so the building department or the building commissioner is the zoning enforcement, enforcement officer. And it is.
I know that.
It is that department's job to ensure that any conditions that you have that are pre-CO are met before a CO is issued. So it's.
Okay, because this morning, I happened to. This morning I pulled into the, what was called North Star Place off Brick Hill Road. And, uh, and I pulled in and there was a vehicle coming out. And, uh, the guy stopped and he says, can I help you? And it was, uh, De Sangro, I think his name is. He's the developer and, uh, he said, uh, can I help you? And I said, well, just gonna check to see how things are going in here. And he said, you look familiar. He says, and I said, I'm on the zoning board. And he says, oh, yeah. And I said, how's it going? And he says, oh, I got three people, uh, three units already rented and I got two more that'd be coming in tomorrow. And I'm thinking, yeah, I don't, it didn't look like the place was really that well along, but uh, I was wondering, is anybody really watching what's going on?
Technically, yes.
If, if you wanna look up the file numbers, oh, fifty-seven dash seventeen. I don't know, we remember what we called for or didn't call for.
Yep, so that, those, that, that final sign-off is all through the building department.
Well, yeah, yeah, whether we had any stay or not, it just doesn't get checked.
So all the conditions that you put in your decisions are supposed to be informed through the building department?
That's an interesting question. Why, but why doesn't it require dual signature? Why doesn't the zoning administrator and the building commissioner have to? Wh- where is that regulation?
You're trying to give me more work to do.
Well, I am trying to, we're, we're trying to put some teeth into these.
Okay, so here's the situation.
Decisions that you worked so hard to crack.
Right, right. But, you know, the other part too is that the building commissioner or the building inspectors are in and out of these buildings and they're supposed to be checking. And frankly, I lack any construction expertise.
Well, you don't need to pass on the construction part. You can pass on the zoning part. You know, did they do the setbacks, match what they said? Did, are the number of bedrooms what we agreed to, et cetera?
Right, and.
So that was a forty A. So I thought at the, at the forty B or forty A that at the, when the project's ready, I thought the zoning board had a sign-off on it.
No.
I'm just wondering, that's not a state regulation. That's, I mean, is it? Where, who decided who the sign-offs were?
Uh, that's probably policy and practice. I mean, you know, it's the building department that is issuing the permit. It's their job to review the permit and ensure that all the conditions, be it, um, state building code or be it zoning board of appeals decision.
It's that there's a, that there's a permit posted?
It's their job, right. But now here's, you know, with permits posting, I've seen it happen in other communities where, you know, I don't know, somebody's got the permit in their truck instead, or the inspector forgot to sign it, so they're bringing it back to the inspector to get it signed off. So I, you, you can't specifically hold the building department responsible for a developer not having that card on site. That's the developer's job.
And then who's, but, but who enforces that? The fact that it isn't posted?
Well, so if the building inspector goes out there and it's not posted, they can do something about it, but they can't go by each site each day and look and see what somebody may have done or not with their card.
But they sign off on those cards at the site.
Correct.
So you have to have them on the site or nobody knows who's inspected. And, and I understand that that's their policy, but that is requirement. You have to.
That's, that's part of the issuing parameters of getting a building permit that it's gonna be displayed.
that is going to be displayed on the site.
Right.
And you can't tell me that some of these developers don't game it.
I, I can't begin to tell you. I just, past experience, I, I can promise you that I have seen contractors bringing in cards to the building department because the electrical inspector didn't sign off on something, the plumbing inspector didn't sign off on something. Oh my God, the dog ate my card, I need a new card.
Yeah, but knowing, especially when you know the zoning board or a board's coming to review that site, because you have a hearing coming up.
Right, but you guys don't typically look at proposals to see if there's a building card there or not.
Well, when they, when they have added to a structure, I would have looked at the permit to see when the, the, the foundation had been signed off on. That would have given me a definitive answer to the question I asked tonight that the applicant's representative didn't have an answer for.
Right, well, what, again, what happened here was that the foundation was poured to incorporate what, what was going to be proposed, which was a third car garage bay. So they poured for the full foundation, and their expectation was that they would come into the zoning board and ask for permission for essentially that third car door.
But they built it. The only thing that's not done in that garage is the floor's not poured and the door's not on it.
I mean, frankly, what I would tell you here is the error is that these people should be coming into you for the whole house. The garage is not a separate structure here. The garage is part of the house. So I think they should be coming into you for the house with the three-car garage.
I guess the point on the building card is that if you had a foundation that you got a permit for, and that was a full foundation, and now the building department goes out and they sign off on the foundation, and it isn't a full, it shouldn't be signed off on because it doesn't meet the permit that has been, that was granted. So the dock boxes are put on those properties because the builders know you have to have that material on site.
Otherwise, they wouldn't have had to come to us tonight for, for a special permit on it. They circumvented it, knowing that we're going to build it, it's never been a problem before. We set it up for the way we were going to build it without the permit. They built it without the special permit. And now it was no big deal because it's been done before. At some point, and I hate to keep sounding like this, if we don't reject some of these projects and send the message that we are willing to do so and send them to appeal, it's never going to stop.
I agree with Scott.
I, I think what I would tell you is happening here, my general observation, not to a specific case, is that there's an intent to build a three-car garage, and that they realize that they need a permit for it. So what they applied for and were permitted through the building department was for a two-car garage bay, which they can have. And the building department does not limit their garage area to a specific size.
Norine, you're missing, you're missing my point. They set up for three bays when they poured it originally.
Right, yeah.
Was proven when they poured it. If they hadn't, and I had gone there and it had been cut out, then it would have been something after the fact. But the clear intent was to have three bays. My question is, why didn't they apply for it when they got their original permit?
Because.
They were going to do that.
Right, because, because they realized that the zoning board of appeals process takes a couple of months. So what they do is they go to building department and they.
The bypass.
Not a good excuse.
They get a permit to build as of right, and then they come to you where the construction's already underway. And then they ask you for permission for this extension that they wanted from the beginning. But they know that the way to get the building started is to show only the two-car garage bay.
That's fine, as long as they don't do, set the home up for something that the permit didn't require. So I understand if they want to build, they want to propose something later on, but the building department has what the plans were on any project. And the building department is supposed to follow those plans. If the building department sees as a mistake, I mean, the, the building commissioner is the zoning officer. He immediately should refer up here. I just went out and there's an error with the plans. I, I think this is what the change is, and you, you folks need to hear this, and this is how it happened. We don't even have any input from the building commissioner on what this is. And I, I, you know, and I agree with you on some of these situations, if it's a garage, we can look at the whole house at that point. We can look at the whole structure.
All right, well, it is past 10:30.
One more. Okay, I just have one quick one regarding North Star Place on Brick Hill Road. The, I don't remember, this was in just 17, this number 05717. I'm not sure whether we had some conditions. I got a feeling we did. And if, but I was also told that the inspectors don't look at the zoning conditions, and they just blow it off. And so we've got the case now, I think, where there's five units out of 20 that'll probably be occupied by tomorrow or the next day. And could somebody look, could Ashley, you know, you look up and see the 057-17, if there's been any inspections? And, and what are our concerns, if there's any?
The occupancy was also based on a lottery agent. The lottery agent had to pick the tenants and do all the prior work. So if there's anybody living in the units, the lottery agent would have to know because they would have had it done the prior approval.
All right.
I got a feeling he's just putting people into.
Well, we, we covered a lot of ground through board discussion.
So we're going to get an audience with Town Council, right?
Yes.
We will.
Yep.
Can we at least put all this by him? Can we also get an audience with someone that has some authoritative say about who goes out and inspects what?
I will set something up with you with the building commissioner as well.
Thank you, Norine.
Yep.
Anything for board updates? Future agenda items?
Sleep.
Sleep. All right.
Drive me at the conference table.
I wish, I wish we could. Actually, they're open, they, well, might not be open this.
Is there anything?
No.
At this hour.
Is there anything further on, if we're going to be continuing to meet Zoom or otherwise?
Yes, so Town Hall is technically open. However, the meeting space cannot be used because there's not a way to properly social distance in there. So we are stuck with Zoom meetings for the foreseeable near future.
All right, anything else? All right, our next meeting is November 5th, like 6:30 here at Zoom Town Hall.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
See everyone then.
Yep.